Afternoon. Today is the joint meeting of the Board of Supervisors with our school board to discuss the 2025 budget. So, we need to take role and we also need to have a motion to allow Ms. Gary, who is in Virginia Beach, to participate remotely.
No, we can't. We have to take role first.
We have to take role first.
Ms. Allen?
Ms. Lockey?
Here.
Mr. Diggs?
Present.
Mr. English?
Here.
Ms. Gary?
Here.
Ms. Minuch?
Here.
Dr. Young?
Present.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to allow Supervisor Gary to participate in the meeting remotely.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Aye.
That was unanimous for the record.
Present.
Ms. Guy?
Here.
Here.
Here. Thank you very much. If you don't mind, I just want to say we appreciate the opportunity to share with you many of the successes that we've had this year, as well as some of our challenges. We've asked our Superintendent Dr. Taylor, as well as our Deputy Superintendent Mr. Fulmer, to present the budget we approved just a very short time ago, and how it will help us better serve the children of Stafford County. We look forward with anticipation to continuing to do great things for our community. Your support and collaboration are vital to our progress, and we're excited to see what we can achieve together. Dr. Taylor and Mr. Fulmer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As it turns out, fate would have it, I have just lost a vicious game of rock, paper, scissors to Mr. Fulmer, and I'll be leading our presentation today. And to echo Mrs. Sigmund's comments, we would like to thank you. And to begin with a very hearty thank you, because what we've been able to accomplish in recent years has been pretty remarkable in Stafford County. And even though we had some state budget challenges last year, we were able to rally even the year before that. We set the foundation for some really positive changes in the school side in terms of how we're resourced and what we can do with those resources. And today, we get to celebrate some of those successes and lay out some of the things that we can look forward to do together. As Mrs. Sigmund just mentioned, we had just readopted our budget, and we're very excited to share that information with you today, because we did receive some great news in terms of state revenue, which ultimately brings our local ask down. So, we will be reducing the original ask that was forwarded to the county administrator as a result of some of those updated figures, and we can't wait to share that with you. You've been in receipt of a green folder. In your green folder, on the left-hand side, is a copy of the presentation you see. I know that sometimes it's pretty difficult to see on the screen and kind of to detail some of the facts and figures and even some of the charts, so we wanted to give you full-size pictures of that. On the right-hand side are some of our budget documents, our school board-approved operating budget, and you'll see that noted right at the top of this document, as well as some of the exhibits that go with each of the budget summary tabs that have exhibits. Not everything does, but some of them, we just want to make sure in full transparency you see where all the money is going. If you do need what we call a Healy-sized version of the budget summary, we do have a little bit larger version if you need that and don't want to rely on readers, and we can certainly pass that out if you need it. Just raise your hand and Chris will make sure that that comes to you. What we hope to convey today and some important messages is we definitely want to convey some of our goals, the details of our request, and why we're making the requests that we're making. But we also want to talk about the things that have worked well when we've worked together, the areas that we certainly need to improve on to move the county forward, but most importantly, how much we need and appreciate you as partners and as partners in this work to make Stafford County a great place to be. We want it said up front and noted that we recognize that you have a tremendous amount of priorities that you have to balance. We know for a fact that we are just one part of your budget, not the entire budget for Stafford County, and we know that any kind of change that we make, it needs to be incremental change, and that we will not be able to eat the apple in one bite, that we will need to do this in chapters, which brings us to the story of Stafford. The story of Stafford is being written today, and even though it's 300-plus years in the making, we have a lot of work to do. I would like to think that during our time together, these elected officials and this county administrator and this superintendent, that this is the third chapter or the third budget that we've had the chance to work together on. And please don't look too closely at the text of that. There's nothing to look into it. It's Jane Austen. It's Emma. It's a good novel, but that's not the purpose of this image. The purpose of this image is to share that we still have many more chapters to write together, and there's still a lot of work to do together, and that we'll do that work incrementally. So, some things that we can be really proud of, that there's been some really significant movement in capital improvement. That's a huge step in the right direction for our county. We have the balance of catching up and making up, and there's a lot of work that goes into that. One of the things that the Board of Supervisors challenged the school board and me when I first came to Stafford was to make sure that we were thinking in five-year terms, that we were thinking ahead and thinking long-term. Though there's some daylight in between the county's five-year plan and the school's five-year plan, it's such a positive step in the right direction that we are looking ahead and that it's not just done one year at a time or in isolation. From the very onset of these boards coming together with this group of elected officials, there's been some buy-in and focused on how we can phase into improvements to salary, how we can stair-step our way to a more competitive rate of pay and benefits for our staff. That's a huge step in the right direction. A big step for us on the school side is making sure that we are fair with our schools and that we are accounting for staff with position control, that we have great financial internal controls, and that we have established staffing standards so that schools get equitable resources and get the resources that they need to be successful. Something that we should all be very proud of is how Stafford has avoided the cliff. The fiscal cliff that was coming from the reduction in ESAR funds could have been dramatic in Stafford County, but thinking ahead, planning ahead, and stair-stepping our way to a little bit of financial freedom was a good move for Stafford County, and it's something that's been a collaborative project, and it's something that we should all be very, very proud of. We've made a ton of no- or low-cost improvements to our programming and to some of our processes, and I can't wait to highlight those for you. But there's still a lot of work to do. We know that there's a lot of ground that we need to cover in terms of attracting and retaining a high-quality staff to teach and serve our children, that adjusting for a really rapidly shifting landscape in terms of the labor market has been a challenge both on the county side and on the school side, and that's something that we need to work on together. Managing our rapid growth, we are the fastest-growing school division in Virginia and one of the fastest-growing communities in Virginia, and that comes with its own unique set of challenges. Maintaining our aging infrastructure is another really significant challenge, and some of the fun projects that we get to work on is how we can position our kids for really bright futures and a successful life and give them something to hold on to where they can make Stafford County a great place to live, work, and learn for generations. Finally, I'll end with this component where we are really focused on adjusting for the unique needs of our kids and our schools, because our kids and our schools are changing. One of the best parts about the budget season is it gives us an opportunity to revisit our goals, to revisit our mission, to revisit our vision, and to re-center on the things that matter to us most. We get that we, the people in this room and our community, what we are here to do is to elevate not just Stafford County schools, but Stafford County as a whole, and that the schools are part of that picture, and we're just very grateful for the opportunity to communicate some of our thoughts this evening. So, this is a picture of Amanda Colette. She is this year's Teacher of the Year at North Stafford High School. She's a phenomenal biology teacher in our STAT/Biomed program. She's going to be one of the leaders that launches our specialty center in health and medical sciences for Stafford County Public Schools. She's a fantastic leader. She's been with the county for a really long time. One of the challenges behind keeping really great people like Ms. Colette is that we need to find a way to compensate them and make sure that they stay engaged and that we are offering a fair wage. We're very proud of the fact that we're a little bit of an anomaly in that 72% of our workforce lives in Stafford County. That is not the norm for most northern Virginia communities, because they can't afford to live in the communities that they serve, and they commute long distances to come to their community. Stafford County is kind of the end of that frontier, and it is a great thing that we are able to do this. But we are a school system of people, not things. We do not have a ton of extra resources to do really anything, let alone purchase learning materials, school buses, computers, what have you. We invest in the people in our classrooms, the people in our front offices, the people behind our buses, and in our nutrition offices to help keep our organization running. Something else that we should be really proud of is that right after the pandemic was probably the hardest year in public education. Adjusting back to new norms, our kids, quite candidly, kind of came back feral. There were a lot of challenges that kids were experiencing coming back with mental health, and as a consequence of that, we had one of the highest turnover rates that public education has ever seen. As a matter of fact, in Stafford County, it was 18.2%. We have whittled that down to 13.2%, and it shows that some of the things that we're doing, that they're working. The investments that we've made to wages, the investments that we've made to culture and climate, those things are paying off, and you should be very proud of that. One of the things that we're not so proud of is that when we think about our teachers in the classroom, that the state average for provisionally licensed teachers is about 9.5%. When I started teaching over 25 years ago, that percentage was less than 1%. So, this number has grown substantially. Unfortunately, in Stafford County, it's 12.5%. This is a very troubling trend for us to recruit and retain qualified teachers who have the teacher training necessary to be successful in the classroom. So, one of the things that we spend an awful lot of time worrying about is how we can offer a wage that's competitive. And truth be told, our neighbors to the south, we do all right. We certainly have made investments that have made us more competitive than Spotsylvania County, but we're not losing teachers to Spotsylvania County like we used to. We're losing teachers to one place in particular, and that one place in particular is Prince William County. Now, I know that there's a lot of feelings about Prince William County, and it may not feel like a great thing to focus on, because the price differential is pretty substantial. Truth be told, I think it's going to be a long time before we can compete with Prince William on price, but we do need to compete with them on structure. And so, what we've been doing over the past several years is we've been bending our salary scales to be more in line with the structure of Prince William's, and so this is what this looks like. The dotted yellow line or orange line at the top is Prince William County's proposed teacher salary scale with just 3%. In truth, it's probably going to be closer to 5 or 8. That being said, where we started just a couple of years ago is the dotted blue line at the bottom, and you may notice that there's like a little bit of a sag right there in the middle. That sag is salary compression from lifting up the starting salary but not increasing along a step scale or a merit step scale for successful years of service. So, what we have tried to do very successfully with your help is we have been slowly bending that curve back up to a step scale based on successful years of merit, which mirrors that of Prince William County. When we've successfully concluded that, when we can start talking about how we can get a little bit closer with Prince William on price. This is tedious. This is time-consuming. This will take many years to do, and this is the third year of our efforts to make this move, and the first two years were very successful. So, where does that bring us in terms of relationship to Prince William and why are we so concerned? Well, this is why we're concerned. When you can be fresh out of college with zero years of teaching experience, and candidly, this is pretty much all of our positions, I'm just using the teacher experience because teachers make up the majority of our workforce, and the price differential is $9,000 with zero years of experience to do the exact same job, that's really tough. But when you do a 30-year career and the price differential is $57,000 to do the exact same job, that's a really tough pill to swallow. So, we really tackled this at the right time, because if we had let this go any longer than we did, we'd be really, really far behind. So, the price differential, if we had just left everything alone and just did flat percentage increases, would be closer to $70,000 at the top of the scale, completely untenable. So, the efforts that you have made in working with the school board to take these steps incrementally has had a significant difference, but there's still a lot of work to do. You can work 15 years in Prince William County and make almost $95,000, and in Stafford, you never get to $95,000. That's a problem. That's a really significant problem that we have to address. But that's not the only employee group that we have. You have some pretty wonderful people in green shirts that have showed up at meetings across the county for the better part of the last few months. We have a lot of service scale members as well, and this is everything from our nutrition workers to our clerical staff to our paraprofessionals. It's a wide range of employee groups that are served on our service scale. They too need to be on a scale where they can predict with reasonable certainty where they might be over a period of time and know that they might have actual salary growth along the way. So, we are introducing the first of five phases. We talked about this a little bit last year, and we didn't have the funding to support it, but there was a lot of drama last year with the state. It is our aim that we start instituting a correction to their scale this year. A big target for us has to do with how we can improve performance, and I would love to tell you that everything is rosy and that everything is fantastic in Stafford schools. I cannot. There is a lot of rays of sunshine that I do get to share and some things that you should be very proud about. We have instituted a number of systems, structures, and processes to become a more high-performing school system. You should be thrilled with the education that some of our children are getting in our elementary, middle, and high schools, because they're being led by great principals who are heavily invested in getting great staff to work with and teach our children, but they've been all kind of working on their own. They haven't had a lot of unifying systems and structures to help support their work, and so that has been a heavy lift over the last year, the last couple of years. It's not been a very expensive thing to do to institute a continuous improvement process, but a very meaningful one. Re-instituting an employee appraisal system, actually having staffing standards and position control, all of these things lead to reliable systems, structures, and processes that will ultimately help improve performance. There's also a ton of awards that we've won over the past few years and recognition that you should also be very proud of. There's a lot that I could highlight here, everything from awards that we've received for partnership with our fire department and having one of the best fire department preparation programs for our students in the state, but I really want to point out just a handful that you have had a place in helping to create. The first one is we were the first school system in Virginia to have a volunteer income tax assistance program for low-income families. Our accounting students work with the IRS to help tax preparation for low-income families in Stafford County, so that low-income families can file their taxes. That is pretty remarkable, that our accounting students are being trained in conjunction with county government and the IRS to help those in need become great citizens and complete their income taxes. Another recognition that you should be very proud of is that Stafford County Public Schools is the best place to work according to Stafford Magazine. That's great. We're very proud of that, too. Something that Dr. Young had a hand in specifically was our Reflect Stafford Cohort partnership with the Stafford Education Foundation, where we are financially supporting through a donation that was secured from the Silver Foundation through to the Stafford Education Foundation to support some of our paraprofessionals to become fully licensed teachers. These are people that are already working with our kids that want to become teachers but don't have the financial means, and they're getting the support. So, where do Stafford schools come in? We provide additional coaching, mentorship, and support so that along their journey in becoming a fully licensed teacher, that they can have all the resources that come with being a Stafford County teacher and job placement in Stafford County where they're already working. We're very proud of the multimillion-dollar grant award that we received from the JED Foundation to address mental health needs in Stafford County. We were one of 18 school systems in the country that was selected for a cross-the-school-division program to provide mental health services to children who are struggling with mental health needs. There's a whole host of other things that we are doing to make this community a great place, and we just are really thrilled about that partnership. Something we're not thrilled about is how poor our test performance has gotten over the last decade. Just 10 years ago, Stafford County was the 15th-ranked best SOL scores in the state. Now, I'm going to caveat this by saying, don't get too excited about SOL scores. They're just one measure of performance, but they're a pretty public measure of performance, and we'd be lying to you if we said we weren't paying attention to them, because we are. And we definitely pay attention to our kids' test performance, and though there may be just a dip here and a dip there year over year, but over time, it starts to add up. And we've gone from being in the top 10 percentile of school systems in the state to the bottom half, and that's happened over a 10-year period of time. We didn't get here overnight, but it has happened, and we are not at the level of performance that we could be or that we should be. Consequently, something else has changed over that time period as well. We've fallen from being in the middle of the pack in terms of our average per pupil costs to being at the very bottom. We are, undeniably, one of the poorest-funded school systems in Virginia. Now, I think it's a big jump to say that there's causation here, and that correlation does not mean causation, but there is a very strong correlation, and we know that with adequate resources, that this could be reversed. Something else that is a challenge is that we are growing. We're growing very rapidly, and we recognize that there's a lot of competing efforts for resources in county coffers. We recognize that, but the county's share of our budget has continued to drop over time. The state, there's a lot of room for improvement from the state. The state clearly does not account for how northern Virginia-ish our labor market is in terms of cost of compete adjustment. There's still a lot that they can do in that space, but the state looks like they are carrying the water in terms of percentage-wise of our budget, and as their revenues continue to go up, the county's share continues to go down. We do have some other really significant things that we have to call out and that we have to own, because they're really troubling. And in addition to making awful headlines, they don't add positively to the climate and culture of our school system or what we would hope for our kids or for our community. Student behaviors have reached a point where it has become very difficult to help kids manage their approach to school, and the parental support that corresponds with that has also diminished in recent years, and this has been a real challenge. We've seen a significant uptick in extreme behaviors from some of our kids, and these are not things that sheriff's deputies can manage. It's something that needs to happen at the school level. These are not necessarily crimes that are taking place, although we have our fair share of those, too, but we do need some help in terms of student management, and it's a real issue. The challenges that we face with student mental health and chronic absenteeism are also at all-time highs for us. If we are serious about campus safety, we will need to invest in some more high-tech countermeasures to make sure that we are keeping our kids, our visitors, our parents, our staff safe when they are on campus, because the world is changing. It is changing very rapidly. Those countermeasures are not cheap. I will say that as many benefits that have come from the advances in technology, they have come with a disproportionate amount of challenges. The kids of today are dealing with a very different landscape than the kids even just a decade ago. The challenges that our kids are facing in terms of navigating the landscape of social media, navigating bullying, and navigating a lot of their friend dynamics is very different than what we were seeing just a couple of decades ago. There are a lot of things that we could be doing to invest in our kids in terms of their economic opportunities after high school, and that should be an area that we should also look at as well. All of these things, one of the things that we should be in the back of our mind or keep in the back of their mind is how are we training our staff and how are we keeping our staff up to date with current professional development? Even if we're not buying something or we're not investing in something, what is the training that needs to take place to make sure that our staff is up to date with some of these things? So, the teacher in the background here is Jenny McCall. She was North Stafford High School's Teacher of the Year last year, and she was the Stafford County Public Schools Teacher of the Year last year as well, and she was also Northern Virginia Magazine's Teacher of the Year. The student that she's hugging, Paula, is a remarkable kid. She is an English language learner. She came to Stafford County not being able to speak a word of English, but graduated at the top of her class with above a 4.0 GPA. So, on the back of her graduation cap, it says, "If you knew my story, you'd be proud." Well, she's got a pretty phenomenal story, but she's not alone, because there are a lot of kids just like her that have phenomenal stories. And our English language learner population is just one small segment of our community, but it is a growing segment of our community. As a matter of fact, it's 13.3% of our students or 4,216 of our students are English language learners, and they come to us at a wide variety of English proficiency levels. I think it's interesting, because I think you all have heard public comment about people coming to our community, and I will say that we are under a moral and legal obligation to teach everybody under the age of 18 and over the age of 5 who lives in our county, regardless of any other status, and we do so gratefully and willingly. But this does come with its own landscape of challenges and its own set of unique needs. I will say the overwhelming majority of our English language learners do come to us with very limited or no English proficiency, and the challenges associated with teaching in that environment and learning in that environment are pretty extreme. This is something that we are working with, and quite candidly, that if we don't get ahead of this, will be a very expensive problem to solve if we don't get ahead of this now. There are budget riders on both the House and the Senate to address this from a standards of quality standpoint, but all of those will have local matches and have local needs. but all of those will have local matches and have local needs as well. One of the questions that I always get as a school superintendent is, "What are you doing about X, and why can't we just solve it?" I'll give you an example. How come we can't have an extra bus for this neighborhood? Or, "How come we can't have two pay periods a month?" Or, "What are we doing for college and career readiness?" Or, "What are we doing to improve academic performance in literacy and mathematics?" "What are we doing to improve student behaviors?" Well, I, I gotta tell you that the tongue-in-cheek response is that they all come with price tags. And as we assess the things that we need to invest in, and we assess the things that we need to do differently to see improvements, they all require investments. So, we fully recognize that the, the balanced budget that the, that the Board of Supervisors is, is, has been presented and should consider, that there are a list of unfunded requests as well. And each one of those unfunded requests has a story behind it of a process improvement that we can and should make. So, in your budget handout, you have a budget summary on one side, but on the back, it details the areas that, that are unfunded that we should be, should be talking about and thinking about in terms of investment. An increasingly significant challenge that I think we're all facing and all concerned about in our community is how do we provide a safe and welcoming environment in our schools? And it becomes increasingly more challenging when the hallways and classrooms are crowded. As good as Lionel White is, and I'm, I'm, I'm be the only one in Stafford County that'll throw a little Lionel White shade tonight, is that we projected 392 students last year. And that, that's true. We ended up with 392 students in September. We ended up with an additional 154 more students as of today. So, there's a whole host of students that come after the start of the school year that we also have to account for. This budget accounts for those 154 students plus the 619 more that we know we're going to expect next year. It's a lot. We're going, we're growing pretty quickly. And right now, growth means trailers. And growth also means having to fix things when they break. And they break more readily when they're overtaxed. And so, we're, we're patiently mindful of these things, but it is a challenge, and it's something that we are concerned about. So I'll get right down to the numbers. Our revenue forecast is positive. And, and I'm delighted to share that, looking at what the state legislature is looking at and taking that into account in the context of the governor's proposed budget, we are projecting $30.3 million in additional state aid, aligning with the, the county administrator's budget of $15 million in local revenue in addition to, in addition to previous contributions. We're looking at a budget just short of $460 million. On the proposed expenditure side, we made some tough choices, and I want to talk through those with you. We are looking at our previous base budget. And the last two years, I was able to bring back to you cuts to the base budget. I am not able to do that this year. There is, we are at bone. There is no place to cut. There were mid-year adjustments made to the base budget after the state adopted its budget, so we've accounted for those. Our non-discretionary expenses, these are the things that, that just keep operations going. It does not meet all of our needs. We'll show you the areas that it doesn't. That is just to keep moving forward with 770 more kids. And then adjustments to compensation that we outlined earlier. And again, this doesn't include all of the things in our five-year proposed budget. Those are the ones that are listed below, the unfunded items. Brings us to a balanced budget of $459.9 million. So, our, our non-discretionary items. We entertained an additional $17 million in departmental requests from schools and, and other departments that we took out of this budget. There were, all of the requests that were made, we actually struggled to find ones that we thought were not appropriate or that were not needed. Those landed in the unfunded list, because we wanted to make sure that non-discretionary meant just what it says, non-discretionary. This is the bare bones, what it costs to keep us going the same as we were last year with no changes, but just 773 more students in terms of additional buses, in terms of additional fuel, in terms of additional utilities, in terms of additional capacity and staffing. It's a lot. On the discretionary side, these are the hot-button things, because these are the things that we have some sway over. These are choices. All of these represent choices. And they are things that we can either do or not do. We can choose whether or not to continue with our phased approach to improve salaries for teachers. Right now, we're at phase three of five. And what that would do is, it would create an average of a 6.5% increase to salary, a basement of 4%, but, but, but that's where that would go, and that comes at the cost of $14.7 million. Adjustments to supplements is just a, a flat 3% adjustment across the board. To our service scale, to put them on their very first phase of the service scale, comes at a cost of $7 million, and that's a minimum of 3% and an average of 8.7 across the board. Our instructional support scale, those are our paraprofessionals. They drastically need market adjustment. They are, they are very out of whack with the rest of the world. That's $1.95 million. Now, here's where the concessions come into play. We made the very difficult decision to increase class size by one student in grades four, five, middle school, and high school. The part that is painful about this is that this is hard to go back and fix, because it will always cost more than it costs today to fix, because we are growing. Also included in here are deferred staffing standard implementation. That's just being fiscally prudent. The part that stings the most is, is adjusting class size. This is a hard thing and not a good thing for us to do. Should additional revenue be made available, this is where you put it first. Then you go on to the other stuff. There's a long laundry list of unfunded requests. Everything from employee groups wanting to be on a two-pay-period-a-month cycle, that is something that the county does that we don't do. It's expensive. $600,000 expensive, because it's not flipping a switch. It does cost money. Making sure that our technology staff is here working and not charging us overtime and summer time, that has a price tag attached to it. So, so to that end, there's a long laundry list of a lot of unfunded requests, but we recognize that this is the bare bones. So, to that end, we're at the end. The next chapter in the story of Stafford is up to us. Very excited to see what, what you will write next for what we were able to do. We hope that our next chapter includes an investment in our schools, because our community deserves a high-quality school system. We think that our community gets a great, a great deal in terms of its return on investment, but we think that they could get an even better return on investment with more investment. So, with that, Madam Chair, that ends the presentation part, and we would love to take any questions that the boards may have at this time.
Thank you very much for that wonderful presentation. Very well done, and we are excited to be here with all of you tonight, because as you said, Dr. Taylor, this is truly a partnership. And with 74% of our teachers and professionals that work in the building, living in Stafford County, we're all part of the same county. And we all love it here. So, I thank you for the work that went into your budget presentation by Chris and his staff and the entire school board, and really appreciate those efforts. And I will now open it up to our board members to see what questions they have, so we can start a dialogue here about our budget. Anybody want to jump in first?
I got, I got a question. I got a question. Did y'all, did y'all take out all the maintenance people in the schools?
No. We have plenty of maintenance people in our schools.
So, but I was told that, that the maintenance, some maintenance staff and stuff were taken out of school, and they were put in a location behind the scu, school bus garage. Is that true?
Uh, we do have some maintenance personnel that are specialized in some areas that go and clear work orders as like a team. So, when we, we have a buildup of work orders, they go in. We've got plumber, painter, carpenter, et cetera, and they show up, and they clear a bunch of work orders all at one time. It's very efficient, very cost-effective. But we do have maintenance personnel in schools.
Okay. And I just, I located this, too, and I don't know. I see where y'all bought 13 vehicles this year. Last year in 2023, over $320,000 in vehicles. Can you tell me what, what that was about? It looks like it was the maintenance. It was 13 vehicles, and you spent $320,000 in 2023. And in 2022, you spent $230,000 in vehicles.
I think we spent way more than that, I think.
This is, this is not counting buses.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So, similar to, to county staff, we have replacement cycles and some expansion, too. So those are our maintenance trucks, our plows, and other maintenance vehicles as part of our cyclic replacement cycle.
So how much did you spend in buses, then?
So, buses, we purchased 10 buses in FY24, and in this proposed budget, we're going up to 13. We should be between 20 and 25 buses a year in cyclic replacement. So we're trying to gradually work our way up to, at a minimum of 20 buses a year. By the time we get to 20, we should be at 25. And buses are about $155,000 a bus right now.
And you purchased how many of these?
Purchased 10 in FY24.
So, to get your head wrapped around the, our buses, they usually last about 10 years or 300,000 miles. And if you've ever had a vehicle that's made it to 300,000 miles, they're running great. So, we, we currently have 250 buses on the road, so that, that 20 buses a year, if you can think about it, is actually a, a low-ball figure. Because if we're replacing them every 10 years or every 300,000 miles, they're, they're going to hit that number very quickly. They're going to hit it within eight to 10 years, for sure. So that replacement cycle is, is going to have to accelerate sooner rather than later.
Okay. Another question. So how many, how many, um, how many employees is in Stafford County schools? How many you got?
Just over 4,500.
And how many teachers?
About 2,800.
And could I get a breakdown from you guys? Is anybody that's, anybody that is in the school system is making over $100,000?
Sure. It's, yeah.
Okay.
Madam Chair? Oops. Thank you, Dr. Taylor, for your presentation. The first question I have is, when you presented just now with the state adjustment, did that include the new information that you, that you shared prior to your presentation? Did that monetary figure was included in that?
Yes, it includes, the, the school board convened at 3 o'clock today to update its state revenue figure, to increase its state revenue and decrease its local request to the county.
So the 15 is with the decrease? Okay. Um, the other, the other question I have is about the discretionary slide that you talked about with the adjustment to staffing standards to meet the 770-something projected enrollment for the upcoming year. Are you guys planning to, I guess, adjust class teaching time as well to help with that? Because I think what is like an hour, and some classes are like an hour and 40 minutes or whatever it is.
Yeah, no. We are not planning on, on adjusting the schedule to accommodate anything along those lines, because I'm not sure that it would, would change the financial mix as much as the actual numbers per classroom, per class section. Each, each level does it a little bit differently in terms of how teaching assignments are, are spread across instructional time. Our elementary teachers basically don't get a break. They, they teach all the time. They, they get a small window of time where their students go to an elective section, art, music, PE, et cetera. That's a, that's a very small window in the day. But other than that, they, they're on the clock in front of their kids six-plus hours a day. At the middle school level, it's a little less than that. They, they are teaching six out of, out of eight periods of the day, and those periods are a little bit shorter in terms of the amount of time that the kids are facing a teacher. And at the high school level, it, it's also a six out of eight. But the, the time periods are pedagogically a little bit longer, so that their teaching time is a little bit more in the, in terms of direct instruction.
So what would be the average class size now?
Well, plus one at every level. So I, I believe that we're up to 23 to 1 at the elementary level and 24 to 1 at the secondary, or 25 to 1, the secondary level.
25 to 1?
Mm-hmm.
And which grade levels would, would you say that, um, so far in the school year, you've seen the most adverse behavioral?
It's our secondary level, absolutely. This hurts us bad. But, but candidly, we're in a very difficult position, because even though it, it is, uh, for lack of a better term, a kind of a little bit of a deal with the devil, and it's choosing staffing in terms of the number of people or staffing in terms of having a body. Because what we, what we see constantly in terms of exit surveys is that the number-one reason that people are leaving us beyond relocation is compensation. So if we're not investing in compensation, we're not going to have a body there in the first place. And that, that is really our challenge, because we've started the school year, uh, the last two school years with over 100 vacancies. Over 100 vacancies. 100 classrooms did not have a teacher in, in, in the front of the classroom. They had a substitute or combined classes or somebody else was managing the class until we procured a vacancy. So, we prioritized compensation over additional bodies so that we would just have a person that could be in the classroom.
Okay, and last question, so none of my colleagues are able to ask questions as well as. Are you guys tracking that part of correlation and causation between the long-term sub or teachers that pick up extra periods with SOL standards? And specifically, and I'm speaking from experience, like my kid, her English teacher is a long-term sub. And that is SOL. They've already taken, I think, like, practice and the second one. And I, I mean, I'll be honest, I don't even know how she does well. It's probably because I forced her to read at home. But, and I'm not saying that to be flippant. I'm being, like, when I ask her some of the stuff, and I'm like, "How do you have a long-term sub in English? It's beyond me." And, and this is not a knock on the sub, I'm just saying.
Absolutely. And, and kudos to the folks that step up and take that role. I mean, it, it's brutal. It, it's a low-wage position, and they are taking on all of the responsibilities, including grading for that classroom. And it's not even compensated at the teacher wage, which is also very low. It, it's a big hurdle. I, I can say with some certainty that it's a mixed bag in the scenarios where we have certified teachers that are picking up an extra section, like we've got a math teacher that picks up an extra algebra section. In many cases, that is preferable to having a sub, because the, the teacher that's picking up the extra section is usually a certified teacher, somebody with experience. And, and that seems to work out very well. Although, we're, we're burning those people out. I mean, we are. They're, they, they are taking on extra work. Granted, they're being compensated for it, but there's only but so long you can do that before the cracks start to show in the foundation. I would say for our long-term subs in the aggregate, they're doing a little bit better than you'd think, but not as well as we need.
What, what do you, what do you pay the, I mean, I think the subs are getting different rates, right? Because of their education?
Not exactly. They, we do have a long-term sub rate, which is just a, a little bit less than our- Not exactly, um, they, we do have a long-term sub rate, which is just a, a little bit less than our first-year teacher, uh, pay. Um, we also have a daily sub rate, uh, for our sub that is assigned to the building several, uh, and it's based on the number of faculty members that are, that are in the building. Uh, and that person gets a, a slightly lower rate than that, and then there are the folks that, that, it's the gig economy, it's the Uber, uh, subs who come in, depending on the day, they select their work schedule and they pick the jobs that they want, and that's even a lower rate of pay than that.
So what is it?
Uh, what's the daily pay?
I can look it up.
Yeah, yeah, about a hundred and twenty dollars a day.
Is that the average or is that?
No, that's the, that's the, the gig economy day, yeah.
Huh?
That's the gig economy sub, that's the one who picks, picks a job and takes the job, it's one hundred dollar, one hundred and twenty dollars a day.
He's asking compared to our colleagues in the, in the region, is that not just the gig, long-term and, 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 and all three levels of subbing, what is that in comparison?
We're, we're low across the board in terms of compensation. Uh, but you obviously have to understand too, we cannot pay our subs more than we pay our, our certified teachers do. And right now, we're kinda like, right up against that. So, it, it's, it's a bit of a challenge, so that there needs to be some sliding scale associated with that.
All right, Dr. Young?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, thank you everyone for being here and, um, accommodating us today in this joint meeting. I have several questions, but let me see if I could get them all, are we allowed to just go through our questions or?
Uh, yeah, start with a couple and we'll see.
Dr. Young, would you mind pulling the mic a little bit closer, we can't hear you.
Oh, I was not trying to be too loud.
That's much better, thank you.
Everybody can hear me, okay, you're welcome. Um, so one of the things you've mentioned in one of the meetings was, uh, certified teachers and that we don't have a, I, I think there's a decrease in the certified teachers and that's what you're trying to get them certified, so I don't know if that has a correlation with, um, having, I don't know, a lesser, inadequate, uh, teaching. I, I don't know what that impact is, but what I do know is that, um, and we, we need to say it because it needs to be addressed. Ten years ago, we know what this county was, I've been living here for thirty years. And I made a note here when you, you did say it and you talked about it, that we have an increase, um, in, um, non-English, um, speaking, uh, students, and so my question was, are they included in the SOL when you do count the SOL numbers?
Yes, if they're enrolled in an SOL course.
Okay, there's your answer. Um, two, I created a program with the previous superintendent, um, where the school board created a program. We created a program after-school program, and I think, hopefully it still exists, it was in Moncur and hopefully it's still in Whitewater, uh, for English learners, so after school. Is that part of this program here, elementary after-school programs interpreters?
I can answer that, so, part of those programs were funded with federal dollars. Um, so, as those federal dollars are, um, moving out and reducing, we're moving those programs because they're very successful, great programs. Um, uh, we want to continue those programs, we need to move them into our operating budget. Um, the other place we actually have an after-school program like that is at Drew Middle School, not just for, uh, English language learners, but for, for all students.
Yeah, okay, so this is something that I know we need to fund and, uh, that should not be cut, right, because this is improvement right there. Um, the other question I had was, um, you talked about the strategic plan early on, the five-year strategic plan, and what I was trying to do, that, that was great, we got improvement on that, but how did you tie it in with, uh, what you're trying to accomplish? Because I know, um, you've, uh, given us the list of, this is what we need, and is it tied into your objectives? Because I do recall we had objectives at some point. And I wanna see, because I've asked this before and you've given that to me, where we looked at, you know, is it increasing or decreasing discipline, is it increasing math grades, is it, um, increasing reading? Like, how are we tying it in?
Uh, absolutely, and I've got a, an overly simplified version, and I can send you a more detailed version for sure. The overly simplified version is one of your handouts that looks like this.
Okay.
And up at the top, it's got little icons for our four goals that we're focused on. Um, our, our goals are, are tied to, uh, creating meaningful post-secondary outcomes for kids, supporting high expectations, keeping a safe, uh, environment, and of course, supporting our staff. And you've got little checkmarks for each of the budget initiatives and how they relate. Because they don't relate to all of them, but they relate to some of them. And so this correlates our strategic plan to our budget directly.
So, so for example, give me an example, one, ensure meaningful post-secondary outcomes for every student prepared for life after graduation.
Sure.
Where does that tie into which objective?
Okay, so that is the objective.
Okay.
And what we are doing in the academic program space in terms of providing high school programming, uh, and some of the things that we're doing that you just described at the elementary school and middle school, all connected. Um, compensation for licensed staff, phase three out of five. That definitely improves our opportunities for post-secondary outcomes, supports high expectations. It does provide a safe, uh, environment in our school when we staff classrooms with qualified people. And of course, it also supports staff, so kinda, that's one of the good ones that kinda covers all the bases, uh, in a pretty, pretty direct way. Um, uh, one of the ones that is very narrow, um, you'll see an increase in, uh, our health benefits, the costs, but our health benefits fund is actually doing okay right now, it's really well managed. So we're not passing that cost on to our employees, and that's kind of a, a tough thing, it's like you don't wanna give a raise to your employees and then take it all away in healthcare costs, right? So, that's one of the things that only gets a checkmark in the support staff, because it really doesn't have an impact anywhere other than staff.
Yeah.
So it's a very narrow focus on just that one part of our strategic plan.
And, um, unfortunately, some folks still think I'm on the school board, they're like, hey, you, I'm like, no, I'm not. And so they ask me a question, where is my taxpayers going? So, if I was on the school board, I will be tying those things together for individuals that are not, uh, don't have any kids in the school anymore, to see where their tax money is going, because that's what they ask me. Um, another question I had was, um, when I was on the board, on the school board, we had, we had step increases, and then, did it just skip my mind? Scale, and so, my question is, like, we moved from scale to step, and then, where, where are we? Are we back at scale, and so are you losing, and I know you talked about compression, are we losing moving along because we keep switching and changing?
Uh, you're definitely not, you're definitely not losing ground, I can tell you that. About seven years ago, uh, Stafford schools went away from a step scale that aligned years of successful service, uh, to a rate of pay. Um, meaning that if you worked five years successfully for Stafford County, you'd be on step five.
And is this for the teachers as well as staff?
For all staff.
For all?
We moved away from that about seven years ago and went to a flat percentage model or a, or a scale or a range. And that flat percentage model, um, is what creates the compression. Now, don't get me wrong, there are some advantages to it, one, it's really cost-effective. Okay, the second thing, it is, it's really cost-effective, but you're not paying your, you're not paying your people that much. Um, two, you're always gonna be able to offer a more competitive starting salary in that model, but not for your experienced people. So our efforts in, in our change in philosophy has been to move more towards that step-scale approach because it is rewarding the people who have chosen to stay with us over a long period of time and rewarding experience in the job, because there is a tremendous amount of correlation between years of experience and quality outputs in education.
Okay, so the reason why I was asking about that is because within the last couple of years, I do recall the cleaning employees, um, but that was a different reason why they wanted to move out of their contract and, and, and you know, change, uh, management, so that was one reason. But then, we had the bus drivers, I recalled administrative staff before I left the school board. So you have pockets, not, you have support staff. So you have pockets of individuals, they've all were on the same scale, why are we having these groups coming out and saying, hey, um, I understand, they weren't, they didn't even get to the first scale yet. But if we've been doing this for a while, why isn't everybody at least on that first?
So you haven't, that's just the thing, is that the best that you've done in terms of correction is the last two years and just four teachers. So, the, the other forty-five percent of the workforce, I mean, I don't know how else to say this, other than Stafford Schools is a big organization, it's got forty-five hundred employees, it's a lot of employees, and it's too expensive to do all at one time. So, doing it in chapters and in pieces is the only real way that you can afford to do it without really escalating your tax burden or having to make other really tough decisions um, in, in terms of what county government can afford to pay. So, you're, you're taking the incremental steps, but, but you're doing them, but they're, you're doing them in steps. Now, if I could give you a glimpse into what the future looks like, like, what does it look like when we've completed phase five? Have we reached the promised land? Probably not, because you've got a price competition with your northern neighbor. And there's also some improvements that can be made that tie the service scale to the license scale so that everyone goes up and, God forbid, goes down when there are bad economic times together. The way that it is right now, because of how massive of an organization you, you, you are trying to work with, with limited resources, you, you almost have to break them up and, and treat them as, as separate entities, but the goal should be to get them back together. So that you're all moving at one pace together at one time. It has not served Stafford Schools well, or the people that are working in the school system well when you've raised the starting salary for all of these employee groups and just added a percentage because you could be working ten years in Stafford, and somebody who's brand-new comes in at a, a rate of pay that is very similar and hasn't worked the ten years, that's what we're trying to correct.
Madam Chairs, I have, I have two, Madam Chairs, I have two more questions and then we're done. Okay, so when we talk about, it was seventy-five percent, by the way, I was listening, not seventy-four. So when we-
Actually seventy-two.
It's seventy-two.
Oh, you had seventy-two on there, oh, I'm really off, I'm really off.
Seventy-five is aspirational, I like it.
Okay, seventy-two. Um, so, when, when we talk about the teachers not being able to afford
Yeah.
homes, and we're seeing, because I, I went through, like, how, how much can we raise taxes? And, and so, are, are we looking at that and say, because these are the same individuals that are paying property taxes, and they say, yes, I wanna raise, not knowing that that raise is gonna go towards, you say it, not me, because I don't want the emails.
Yeah, so the, you, you all have a very challenging job, and I, I think that the, the school board, we respect.
No, no, it's not about our job, it's about their, their, their paycheck and for them to take that money right back out to pay property taxes and anything else and be able to live. So, that story needs to be told also, right?
And, and there's a, uh, the being able to live thing is a very real challenge for school staff. And here's, here's what we mean by that. So, up here on this chart is, um, our first-year teacher, our average teacher salary, our paraprofessionals and our bus drivers, and the paraprofessionals and bus drivers are average. Um, there's their annual salary, their monthly salary, their VRS deduction, and for those who don't know who VR, what VRS is, is the Virginia Retirement System, they have, they have a, a percentage that they have to contribute. Um, their health insurance costs, which are pretty reasonable. Um, our average teachers take advantage of the family benefits, so that's a little bit more, but if you're just doing it by yourself, it's pretty reasonable. Their taxes, that they pay, uh, state and federal. And to use the average rent in Stafford, um, well, candidly, our people can't afford the average rent in Stafford. So, using eighty percent of the average rent in Stafford, um, what phone, utility, and other ancillary household expenses, a car payment, if they have it, and again, this is an average car payment for Stafford County. Their leftover living expenses are pretty paltry. So, what do we learn from this? Well, we've learned that basically, our first-year teachers can't afford to live by themselves in Stafford County. They can't. They have to have some kind of codependency. Same goes for our paraprofessionals and our bus drivers, they cannot afford to live in Stafford County. So, as painful as it may be for the community to contemplate the idea of adjusting its tax rate, I don't know how else to say this, I don't, I don't think you can afford not to do something to account for this. Or else, we won't have a workforce, and it, and it really is that dire.
Okay, my last question. I know, up there it says fifteen million. If you have to make a decision, what is your lowest that you could go? And I'm not talking about bare bone, but what is your number? Because you start at nine, there is a nine, there's zero, there's nine, and then there is fifteen. So if you had to say, this is the lowest I could go, what's that number? Because people are gonna pick a number, so you, you tell me what your number is.
Well, I would say any adjustment-
Um, hold on, I, I object.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a question that should come to this board. I mean, I appreciate what Dr. Um, Taylor and, and Mr. Fulmer making this presentation on our behalf. Um, but, this is the school board budget, not the superintendent's budget.
School board?
Well, I would expect that the school board would have to sit down and have, you know, a, a discussion. We'd have to weigh, you know, the costs and benefits, you know, of any cuts.
So I, I thought that's what you're already doing, no?
If you're looking for an answer for me, I don't have an answer at this point, and I certainly don't think this board is prepared.
We are tasked with presenting a needs-based budget, so fifteen million is our needs-based budget.
Okay, hang on one second, um, Dr. Young, Supervisor Allen has a question.
I will say I can answer that a different way, that will definitely not position the school board into, to, um, any decision-making, and just say this. The discretionary funds are all compensation. So that's it. So, reductions in our budget equal a reduction in compensation.
My question is, kinda, and I, it actually just came to me from Dr. Young's question, because I've gotten questions about it. If we're being presented with a budget from the schools and we have our own competing needs, that, um, as everyone is aware of, the question I always get, then why does the superintendent pre- present a budget? Why have two competing budgets from the school side of the street? And then, when we ask questions, we get a response like that, right? Like, it's not, it's not ever done in harm, it's just for us and for people who watch, there's two budgets that come from the schools and we're like, well, which one?
Yeah, so process-wise-
No, I'm just saying why.
Virginia Code requires us to have a superintendent present us a budget and then for us to take that and-
And you have two budgets too. Um, you have your final adopted budget and you have the county administrator's proposed budget. It's the same process, you actually only get one budget.
We don't create a budget, we go up off his budget, there's a difference, we're not creating-
Oh, great, then our conversation's over, you go with Randy's budget, we're good to go, thank you. Oh, wait, no, it doesn't work that way, same, same scenario, so. Um, a- and this is, this is how the, the state has set up this system. Uh, the superintendent is, is required to present a needs-based budget, uh, to the school board. It's the school board who are representatives of the community to evaluate, uh, the superintendent's proposal, to make changes to it if necessary, and then to submit an approved budget to the supervisors. You only get one budget, you get the school board's approved budget. That is the budget to consider, and in this case, this year, they're the same thing. So, um, from a process standpoint, it works very similarly uh, to how the county government works as well. It's just this extra layer of having another elected body that is in the process. But you, you are dealing with the exact same thing. Um, you get a budget proposed to you from the county administrator, you weigh the- Um, you get a budget proposed to you from the county administrator, you weigh the needs that the county administrator has proposed, and you make changes accordingly based on the representation that you've been elected to, to do in your constituency. So, um, I, I get the misunderstanding and the miscommunication, and I will say that it's an uphill battle, because it doesn't help us with clarity for anyone in the community who's like, wait, which budget am I supposed to be looking at? What is this supposed to be like? It, it can be very confusing, and, and we, we bemoan that as well. Um, but the school board has spent about six weeks reacting to, uh, the budget proposal that they received. They adopted a budget, they got updated revenue projections, they made an amendment to their budget, and they're sending you one budget.
And I would say that's probably the first time that I can remember where it's one budget. Typically, it's the school board or the superintendent's budget, and then the school board comes back.
Yeah, and that was intentionally in resp- I mean, every year when our budgets are prepared, we prepare it with the, um, comments that are made from your board to our board. And that, and normally what we hear is, the superintendent's budget is cheaper, school board added some stuff, we're gonna go with the superintendent's budget because it's cheaper. So this year, we were just work, made sure that we worked from November retreat, um, up and in through today, to get as close to, and we did today, get the budget that we wanted to have.
Okay, thank you. All right, Supervisor Vernuch?
Thank you very much. Um, okay, just a couple of questions on the state funding piece. Um, so as I understand it, the state and the federal government provide funding for each student, right? And then, um, they provide additional compensation for different classifications of students. If, if you don't know that off the top of your head, that's totally fine, but if you could kind of send that to us, and then maybe like a four-year historical as to what the federal government has provided, the state has provided, and how that's sort of married up on a scale.
It's a little bit different in Virginia, but good news, they're trying to go in that direction. Um, what Supervisor Vernuch is talking about is a, as a weighted student funding formula. Thirty-nine of the states in the US follow a weighted student funding formula. It makes an awful lot of sense. Um, Virginia has retained its antiquated model for the last forty years. Um, I think we're the second or third oldest funding model, um, in the country. Uh, we, we just haven't updated, usually, uh, funding models get updated every twenty or so years, legislatures go and fix that. Um, that was one of the more significant findings in the J-Lark report that came out about public education funding. We are not at a, at a student, uh, weighted funding formula model. We actually are funded based off of, uh, standards of quality, which is a state staffing standards model, uh, which provides direct basic aid on a sliding scale, uh, based on a wealth calculation that, uh, that everybody in the state tends to bemoan, the local composite index, which calculates the required local effort for each locality. Um, the federal government does things really, really interestingly. They do take into account, uh, student populations like, uh, like Supervisor Vernuch mentioned, but they also bucket some of their funding, uh, in terms of, uh, unique programming, uh, such as like the Carl D. Perkins Fund, which allocates funds for career and technical education. Uh, they also have, uh, uh, title funds that are connected to, uh, low-income, uh, student populations, uh, English language learners with Title III, uh, professional development for principals and teachers, Title II, and so forth and so on. So it really kind of just depends. But we, we can certainly share out, um, how direct basic aid is formulated for Stafford, and I will say it is disproportionately not in our county's favor, the way that they do it, because of the required local match. So, and this was an issue that we kind of rubbed up against a little bit last year, and it was a little bit of a challenge for us, because you almost get dinged twice if you're not meeting the local match, because you lose, you, you almost have to get the incentive money by making, making a local match to something, or else you lose both. So it, it, uh, it kind of hurts you in both places, and that's not a friendly formula for the county.
Thanks, and I just had one other question, um, that kind of came up as we've had some public comments at our board meetings, and, you know, all the emails and phone calls that we get at budget time, in regards to the raises. Um, if you could provide us sort of like a four- or five-year historical rate, like where that money has gone? Um, because I know when we talk about like five percent or seven percent for everybody, is that going to all the staff? Are you using it to adjust the teacher scales in certain areas? Um, that would be really helpful, because I know one year we passed a resolution mid-budget cycle to provide one point two million dollars in bus driver compensation, because you guys were having a hard time retaining and recruiting bus drivers. Um, that would be helpful, and then does, does everybody get that same percentage? Like, when you do the scale, like one enhancements, for example, does everybody get three percent raises still? Do they move up on their scale that they're on? Um, and then does central office get those raises? I think that would be really helpful for us to better understand.
Yeah, you're asking a very insightful question, because it's kind of like the, the drama that we're living out right now. Um, the, I can speak directly to the last two budgets before this one, because this is my third budget with you. Um, and we're in our third phase of adjusting the teacher's scale. They are not flat percentages. It, it is, uh, bending the scale to accommodate for that, so the people that with more experience are clearly benefiting more, but they've also gone without for the longer period of time as well, and kind of had, had struggles trying to stay with us. And so now, if you have less experience, you're getting a very predictable increase every year. You're getting that, that step increase, or that three percent differential every year. But beyond, um, our, kind of our, our breakpoint, and this year it's at step fifteen, which is really good. We've gone from zero to fifteen, that's great. Um, that's all very predictable, but then after step fifteen, it's, it's an adjustment, and you're starting to feel it. For our service scale, they have been getting just flat percentages. The downside with that is that that flat percentage has been adding to their compression issues over time. That's the, that is part of the problem, that is why they need, they too need a correction to their scale and a restructure, because they, they, by just getting flat percentage increases, they really haven't experienced any kind of growth. And, and what's ha- ended up happening is, you're, you're kind of lifting the boat all at one time, but it's not really, it seems fair and equitable, but the reality is, it, it's not structured in a way that's promoting their, uh, their level of experience.
And so, just to, to make sure I have it correctly, um, so everybody in the system moves up on the scale every year?
Not yet.
Or does everybody get a predictable, like, three percent raise in the last couple of years? So when you say that the service employees have moved up on that scale, what is that percentage?
Actually, they haven't. Uh, our service employees have just gotten a flat percentage increase.
Okay, okay, I guess that's what I'm asking then.
And that's part of the struggle, is that teachers are now onto a scale where they do have some predictability as to what to expect, but our service staff have not. Um, I, I will say, something that we do need to be mindful of and think about in the next couple of years, the, the group that's actually falling furthest and furthest behind in the market is actually your school leaders, your school administrators, principals, APs, the, the folks that are just north of the, of the six-figure salary range, because, very candidly, here's the problem that we're running into. People can leave being a twelve-month principal and become a ten-month teacher in Prince William County with a lot less responsibility and get paid more to teach than to be a principal, and that's kind of where we're at right now. So that's, that's the group that we're gonna have to take a hard look at next, after we address the needs of our service scale, which is long overdue.
So I'm just trying to get at, so I know we've done the phase scale, I'm not trying to beat a dead horse here, but I'm, I'm just trying to figure out when somebody comes to me, and I say, oh, you guys should have gotten at least a two or three percent raise every year, what is the percentage? Like, if I walked up to any average employee, they would have at least seen that percent increase over the last-
Somebody, everybody has gotten something, correct? Whether it's scale or percentage, nobody's been at zero.
Last year, um, there was a five percent flat, because it was also matching the state's-
Yeah.
-budget proposal. And then we did a one, a mid-year adjustment of two percent, but since it was halfway through the year, it was really only one percent. Halfway through the year, half of two is one, you follow what I'm saying? But, but something that you do have to keep in mind and adjust here for is a five percent raise to a low-wage employee is nothing. It, it is, it is not an adjustment that's noticeable.
And I'm not digging it, I'm just trying to get the facts so that I'm more educated to be able to answer that, because I know a lot of you'll come in, and you guys say, hey, we want to implement this pay scale. I know the sheriff's office has done the same, like, we've, we've worked on pay scales, and we've worked on pay increases, but then the follow-up, like, what did you guys end up doing? Because a lot of times, we don't have control over what, if we give you the money, then you guys can allocate it, and then we, so hearing some of this has been really helpful to be able to follow up and say, this is, this is where the money went.
Chris is passing out our budget sheet from last year, so that you can see. Um, the good news is that if we don't say what we, uh, if we don't actually follow through with what we say we're gonna do, it's pretty easy to call us out, and the line for the podium would be out the door. Um, over the past, uh, two budgets, we've raised, uh, service scale a flat twelve percent over two years. Five percent the first year that I was here in fiscal twenty-three, and in fiscal twenty-four, it was five percent plus the mid-year adjustment, two percent, so it's a total of twelve percent in the aggregate. That's over the last two years. But I, but I do have to impress upon you, twelve percent, when this is your wage, is a really hard pill to swallow, because it, it does not show up in your take-home paycheck. After taxes, after VRS, after all this stuff, it, it's one night of one person eating Chick-fil-A. That, that's what it turns into. So, um, we, we feel like it's, it's, the important step for them is to give them structure, give them process. I think you all see that.
Absolutely, we get that, I don't want you to, I don't want to diminish that, I just wanted to better understand, so I could answer the questions.
I think I agree, because we do come and we do a presentation, and we say, this is our plan. Then we got our, our funding, and we reconcile, and sometimes we have to defer some of the things we've put in our budget, and that sometimes gets lost in the reconciliation process. So are there things we've had to defer as far as salary, eh, where we're?
Now, we, we stick to it, so about three-quarters of the way down your Healy-sized document, um, it, you'll see discretionary expenses, and the top line is about nine point nine million for a five percent increase, um, across the board, and it was sixteen point eight million to fully fund phase two. Except we had something happen in the middle of the year. We were able to close that gap, so we fully funded phase two. You go further down, two more lines, and you've got four point eight million dollars, a five percent across the board for non-licensed service staff. If we were going to do phase one, it would have been six point eight. So there's the differential right there, we were not able to finance the full phase one last year. So they've been waiting patiently.
Okay, um, let's see, I'm gonna go, uh, go, Supervisor English, do you mind if I go to Supervisor Gary, who's online? Okay, Supervisor Gary, do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, thank you, can you all hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, wonderful, and thank you for bearing with me. Um, I just wanted to make a comment, one, thank you all, um, who are there, uh, for asking wonderful questions. It's very helpful as I, um, listen along here. Um, I just wanted to say thank you very much to Dr. Taylor and, uh, Mr. Fulmer for, for getting this prepared. Um, you know, there have been some recent hiccups and, and trust issues and things like that, that I've expressed personally, but I want to say this is definitely helping, um, to, to restore a lot of that, and I, I think you've done an excellent job, and thank you for the, the very thorough presentation. I'm, I'm good for now, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Supervisor English?
What I would like to see, you got men, meeting ends meet, but you have the teachers, the teachers, professionals. What about the support staff, I want to know what they're making?
So the last two categories are support staff positions.
Professionals and the bus drivers.
Paraprofessionals are two of the categories. We, we have literally two dozen different types of support staff.
Okay.
So there, there's literally, what is it, about thirty different scales for support staff for thirty different types of positions? But these are just examples.
So that's cafeteria work and everybody, that's-
They're, they're in that mix, granted, they're not listed here, but your spreadsheet would be like twenty slides long.
But I would just like to know, so, yeah, but-
And does that include, like, your administrative people at all the schools?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, um, I have a question regarding, while the health benefits are up there, I think it's been, and Andrea and Chris would know best, um, I, I'm gonna say it's been five or six years ago, we decided to bring the health benefits together for the school division and the county, because there was too large of a delta between the two. And, you know, it wasn't something that we could fix overnight. We knew it was gonna take probably three to five years to bring them closer in line. Um, can anyone here answer for me where we are in that now?
So I can, um, so we have aligned our benefits, so we offer the exact same benefit package as far as health and dental. Um, the difference, um, which we have not fixed or even really started to fix, is what employees pay. So the employee premium portion of that. Um, in most areas, the, uh, school staff pay a higher premium than county staff. I mean, there's a few groups that actually county staff pay a little bit more than, um, and then school staff. So, um, ultimately, long-term, we'd like to get those aligned as well. So the employees' portion and the schools or slash counties' portion is the same on, on, for both sides.
Okay, and is on, is that somewhere in here as a unfunded item, or you, that's not even on the table right now?
It's not, in our five-year plan, we address the, the growing health insurance demands and needs. Uh, and, and part of that is just growing health insurance costs, and part of that can be applied towards also looking at, um, because if you increase the employees' premium, that means the cost goes up for the school division. So, um, it's something that we would like to do, but it's several million dollars to try to close that gap.
Okay, and then, um, I believe there was a decision to, uh, remove the IB program at Brookpoint High School? Is that correct?
So we are doing some program consolidation. Um, we, we are adding a program to Brookpoint in, in Health and Medical Sciences, but consolidating some of our other programs. Uh, some of the struggle that we have is that we do have some under-enrollment across the board in, in a lot of our programs, so we are, are aiming to try to consolidate to be a little bit more cost-effective.
And did you also look at Mountain View for that as well? Um, and the expense per student for that program, as well as CGS? Um, have you guys looked at those?
Extensively.
Okay, all right, thank you. Supervisor Allen?
I want to go back a little bit to the, the classroom staffing size increase. So you were saying before that rather than having bodies in front of people, you'd rather have qualified bodies in front of people, is what I heard. I guess the size increase isn't gonna go away, so is there a plan to address that? Um, because if you're saying that it's gonna take us a few years compensation-wise, um, to address and make us more competitive, um, then what is the plan to make sure that our classes are not like thirty students per teacher? Because I'm saying this as a parent, my kid complains about her classroom size, and how even the sheer number now is just disruptive. Um, because I get, when she comes home, she's like, I don't like being in school, because there are too many kids, and the teacher has a hard time controlling them, so even one student is freaking me out. So I can just imagine what it'd do for kids, and I'm not saying that, um, just to say that, like, that's been our biggest issue, is getting her to refocus, um, because she has issues too with attention. So she was like, when the class gets disrupted, it's hard to refocus. So for me, as a parent, and I, and I can just imagine parents with similar needs or special needs, like, one extra student, it's like, well, what is the game plan in the few years that our classrooms are not expanding? And, and how do you budget for that?
So for the low, low price of three point eight million dollars, you too can solve that problem, Supervisor Allen.
Wish I would, trust me, I would.
And this, this is the, the same dilemma that, that you all face with, uh, competing priorities, and, and trying to, um, have some strategy that you can apply, uh, to this. This is like the one card, you can't play this card again. I guess is my point, is like, you can't adjust class sizes up again. One, because you don't have the physical space, and here's what I mean by that. The classrooms themselves are physically not big enough, that you can't infinitely add kids to a classroom. The classrooms themselves are physically not big enough that you can't infinitely add kids to a classroom. So, you couldn't even do 30 kids to a classroom even if you wanted to in some spaces, because you physically cannot fit them in the actual classroom. Um, so there are some very hard limitations to that. There are also some limitations in terms of, uh, what the state's expectation is. And candidly, Richmond doesn't do us any favors in this regard. Uh, there are staffing expectations for English classrooms that are different than staffing expectations from CTE classrooms, that are different than staffing expectations for chorus, band, and orchestra. And we have to adhere to all of those guidelines simultaneously. So it's, it's a bit of a juggling act, for sure. Um, but, but I would say, moving forward, that this, this is kind of like the end. You're, you're already kind of at the, the upper threshold here. You're not gonna be able to, to play this again as a budget initiative without having to adjust other really significant things.
So the 3.8 right now is in, in the current budget?
No, it, it, that is a, that is a, a credit, because we have increased class size. We have reduced that staff to create a 3.8 million dollar savings, so that you can have a balanced budget. And if you want to put it back in, Supervisor Allen, we take it. I think that's a great idea.
No, I'm just asking.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Okay, just good. All right, very good.
No objection to that motion.
That's a penny, that's a penny and a quarter on the tax.
And I had one follow-up question about the, the adjustment in programming.
Yeah.
With Brookpoint getting the Health and Sciences and the other schools getting whatever they're getting, how is that impacting you in terms of staffing? Because I can imagine, you, are you gonna have the qualified individuals needed to teach some of these subjects?
Yeah, very much so. And good news is, we already have a lot of those staff in place right now, already on the payroll, who are already working for us and working to that end. Um, I, I will say that, that offering programming is actually one of the good low-cost things that we can do. We do have to, to find mechanisms to support with, like, ancillary benefits. For example, this past year, we got a $500,000, uh, grant from the Claude Moore Foundation. Pretty great. Um, and the sole purpose of that grant is to finance health and medical science programs at high schools. Well, specifically, Brookpoint High School is the beneficiary of a half a million dollars to support biomedical programs. Well, if we wanted to spend that money on anything else, we couldn't. So we are spending that money on that. Um, minimal capital needs for, for any kind of programming development, unless, of course, we want to enrich something, and we want to make it awesome, and we want to make it better. Um, but, but there, there, that's a low-cost solution to really improve the, the learning landscape in our schools. Because no matter what, in an eight-year day, the kids are gonna be somewhere based on your staffing allocation. So, your staff's not gonna go dramatically up, your staff's not gonna go dramatically down, unless you, uh, enforce rigid class caps or you make other radical adjustments. Uh, good news for us, in any kind of entree program that we're trying to initiate, we're trying to accommodate for one freshman elective in any kind of new programming. That's a pretty easy ask for us to do, and it's pretty low maintenance. And, and, uh, a pretty low lift for us, um, in terms of process.
Okay, so when you, when we talk about that grant, and that is awesome, that's wonderful. I think back onto the VAS grant that we had years ago, some of you on the school board.
Not my favorite.
I know, not a favorite. It was one thing I wish I'd never voted on. But anyway, um, the grant for Brookpoint, for the biomedical, um, is that grant, uh, one or two years? And then is that something that the school division picks up in perpetuity if the program continues? How does that work?
Well, the, the smart money is probably on personnel to a small extent, and then, uh, to absorb or eliminate that cost, um, within the two-year window of the grant. The grant is renewable, uh, so we can apply for, uh, renewable funding beyond that. Uh, the success rate of renewable funding for Claude Moore grants is nine out of 10, which is very good. Um, but the, the really smart money is in, in any kind of materials or capital improvement needs that we would do. And that, that's really how you should treat one-time money anyway, is, is to look at it through that lens. I'll give you another example. We got a $250,000 grant, uh, for, uh, HVAC and plumbing equipment for, uh, Stafford High School. Awesome.
Yeah.
And that's just for equipment. And that's gonna be transformative for us, so.
That's great.
And that's how we should use the, the one-time infusions of cash. Is, is not to make it overly reliant on personnel, but to use one-time money for one-time expense.
Okay. Um, I have one last question. Oh, go ahead, Dr. Chase.
I, I was just gonna say the Claude Moore, uh, grant, when we toured the various programs, you know, it's a hundred thousand dollars to get a medical dummy to have students train on. So that 500,000 will go pretty quick to provide, provide those kinds of things. So it's more sort of things like that that'll get used for.
Okay. Um, with our growing ESL population, um, because it was very different when I was back on the school board, and I know they had a different model back then. Can you share with me and the public, how do we actually educate those students now? Are they in the general ed classrooms, and then they do pullouts with an ESL teacher? Or how, how is all that done? Because those numbers are, you know, are significant.
Yes, and it, and it really depends on the child's English level of proficiency and also the level of schooling, um, that they're in, whether it's elementary, middle, or high. For example, a student who is a high school student who comes with very little English proficiency, they're gonna have very few classes that are in the general population for understandable reasons. They're going to have a separate class that is going to be, uh, an ESL class that is specifically for that student. Uh, but a student that has a higher level of English proficiency, they're gonna receive some pull-out or push-in services, um, at the secondary level. At the elementary level, almost all of our students, regardless of their, uh, of their, uh, English proficiency, are gonna be in the general ed setting for the majority of their day. Because all the kids are learning the alphabet, learning how to read, and learning, uh, uh, different strategies. But they too are gonna be receiving push-in or pull-out, um, uh, support as well. One of the, one of the really smart things that I think that we've been champions of in Stafford is, um, is working with state legislature to adjust the staffing standards at the state level of how they finance, uh, ESL or ESL classes. And both the House and the Bud, and the Senate both have budget amendments in their budgets this year that adopt the model that we have been showcasing for the past two years in our legislative agenda. Phenomenal. Because what it does, and, and if this makes any sense to you, the previous, uh, staffing standard for ESL was 54 to 1. 54 students to one ESL teacher. And they updated it a couple of years ago to 45 to 1, which is laughable. Um, what we have been pushing and what we've been recommending and working with the legislature on is having a sliding scale. Because our, our newcomers who speak very little English or know English need a very different level of support than our kids who have two or three years of English proficiency versus our kids that we're just checking in with and seeing how they're doing and that have exited the program. So, they're, they're accounting for that differentiated level of support. It's kind of the, the approach that we've been taking to kind of get a little bit ahead of this. And the results kind of speak for themselves. Our kids are performing a lot better in that space than they were before. They're progressing from one, uh, level of English proficiency to the next at a higher rate than they were before the pandemic.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, board members, do you have more questions? Okay, I have, um, do you, um, I have, and I'd like to work with Andrea on this if I might. And I don't know if you have any of this at your fingertips. So, I think it's important for the public to kind of understand where we are as a board supervisor. Um, if you remember, if you happened to watch Scott Mawowski's presentation, he's our Commissioner of Revenue, at our last Tuesday meeting, um, when, and, and we all know, if you think that your assessment went up really high, um, everybody raise their hand. Oh, I see people that aren't raising their hand.
Mine didn't.
Oh, okay. Wow, well, assessments went up really high. I've heard anywhere from 30,000, and the highest I've heard were quite a few, and 100,000 spaced all around the county. Okay? Um, so, Mr. Mawowski indicated on one of his slides that our effective rate with the assessments was, is 84 cents. The county has brought in 28 million dollars of new revenue. So this is how we're building things from 84 cents up. So if we do not raise taxes, we will keep the effective rate at 84 cents. That means the county has no additional revenue, and the schools have no additional revenue. Okay? So, um, we have what we call the have-tos, the things that we have to do. Debt service on high school number six, the new minimum wage requirement, the jails, um, requirement, juvenile detention center. Um, some portion of what the health department is asking us for. And... Right. So, and then we have other partner agencies that have requested money. So what we do is we have to build from there. For every penny on the tax rate, it generates 2.6 million dollars. So if we, so one penny equals 2.6 million. Um, Andrea, is there anything else to that number as far as the have-tos? Um, the ARPA money regarding public safety? Okay?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, um, we definitely are, um, coming off of our ARPA money, the use of our ARPA money, kind of the same timing the schools is coming off of the use of their ESRA money. Um, the board did use them for some ongoing expenditures in public safety. So will be, those are cutting into our budget as well.
Okay, and then also, we have, um, an additional requirement of 1.7 million for the Comprehensive Services Act. And that's for the public day school at Drew Middle School. Uh, what, I mean, private day school. What did I call it? Oh, oh, right. Um, 2.2 million for debt service. Is that county or schools additional?
That's all schools.
That's all schools.
A little bit of savings, about 600,000.
Okay. Um, and the 0.8 million increase was for, my notes aren't complete, from our meeting. Do you remember? Any?
Um, that's probably from the jail. That's probably from the jail. We're going up about 800,000 dollars in the jail.
Okay, so, so here is the conundrum. So you keep, you, we add on, we give the schools, if the schools want 15 million, we're up over 94 cents. We raised taxes 9 cents last year. And so, we're trying to figure out as a board, um, we have the have-tos, because they're kind of mandated. Um, and then we have other requirements, and then we take everything else, and we have to decide what are the priorities for the community. So I just wanted to share that out there with everybody, so you understand where we are starting from. We're starting from 84 cents and going up from there. So anyway, I, I thought that might be helpful information for everybody.
Madam Chair, I hope that you include the schools as part of your have-tos.
Absolutely.
I would also like to, um, just interject. Uh, my husband never watches, um, he watches all my board meetings, but he never watches yours, sorry. But, uh, he did watch the presentation that Randy made the other day and was very impressed with the amount of work that you had done with Dr. Taylor and looking at schools, as well as the other county needs, to put together your budget presentation. So, he never says anything, never watches anything, but he did, and he commented specifically on your budget. Sorry, Dr. Taylor, about yours.
Yes. Supervisor Vanuch?
Just to add some extra context to what Supervisor and Chairman Bumpke just said. So, last year, we raised taxes on average 10%. The year before that, it was another average 10%, and that was an assessment year. This year, with it being an assessment year, the 94, or the, the 94 cent proposed rate, including the fire levy, is a 13% average tax increase. So that would be a 33% increase over three years of taxes. That's significant, and people are really feeling that. And really, the difficult situation we're in in raising taxes significantly, especially in an assessment year, is that you have some people whose assessments went up 8%, but then you have the people who, and these are more of the moderate income folks, who have four, 500,000, those houses went up astronomically. I mean, I'm getting emails from residents in Rock Hill that live in, like, Rose Hill Estates, and their houses went up 100, 125,000 dollars. And that was, that's like a 30 to 35% increase. So if we don't, if we just leave it at 94 cents, then that means that person is seeing in one year a 35 to 40% tax increase on their property taxes. And that, that is staggering. Um, so, so tho, those are, just so you guys understand the magnitude of the decisions that we have to make.
For the real estate, not for their personal property.
Not personal property. So, so it's, it, when we say, like, it's a little easier to raise taxes in a non-assessment year, because you know, like, it's, it's gonna impact everybody pretty much equally. Um, but in a non, in an assessment year, the, the range of those assessments is so vast that it makes it really difficult. So, when we, you know, if we come back to you and say, guys, we're getting feedback from the community, because, just to give you guys the, the 15 million plus the two for, 2 million for debt service, we cannot go below 94 cents, which is a 13, that's just the hard and true of it, we've been to budget work sessions. We cannot go below 94 cents to give you 15 million dollars, plus the 2 million for the debt service that you need for high school six. So, that, that means it would be a 13% increase for most, but for a lot, it's much higher. So, we need you to really work with us and figure out what we can do to work together. We don't want this to be like last year, where, you know, and, and I'm, I'm gonna bring up sort of the, the elephant in the room. The social media stuff has got to stop. We're all adults. We have to stop blaming boards. I know that your superintendent has talked to you guys. We, as a board, do not do that to the school board, and not everybody's guilty of it. But we are really trying. Last year, we tried really hard to meet the school's needs. We moved up three additional elementary schools. I'm sorry, sorry, three schools, two elementary and one high school. We're trying to work with you, but you're really damaging the trust and the relationship between these two boards with the blaming of the different bodies on social media. So, I just wanted to make that appeal to you. It's, it's devastating to the community, it's devastating to us, our staff. It's, it really impacts the way that we can continue to work together. So I would just make that appeal, that we, we act like adults and we work together.
So, Madam Chair, can I, can I just say something about what, how, I mean, we want to talk about last year. We also have to remember, when you're talking about social media, is also the comments that you made up on the board. And up on the board, you were, right before the, um, the public hearing for the taxes, boom, boom, boom. There were three of you that fired off things against schools. And you didn't do it at the 3 o'clock, you also did it at the 7 o'clock. So please, when, and then when you tried to say, you all sat in meetings and got updated on your budget. Well, I wrote a budget, and that budget gave schools a 2%. You guys got the same emails that we do from state, knowing where we sit at the state level. So by all means, social media is an annoying annoyance, but so is some of the things like saying, I hope I don't have a have-to-go nuclear option. So is things saying, you're wrong. We're not wrong. We, when we're 6 to 1 making a vote, we're not wrong. We made a decision, it was our decision. So just remember, that comments made up on the dais is getting to the public where they question us, where they, uh, you know, we have to do a lot of our own repairs. So the arrows being drawn and thrown, I would say go both ways. And I think you should acknowledge that, too.
So I'll comment on the social media stuff. You came at us at the last meeting telling us that we weren't being transparent with the public. We weren't holding meetings, we weren't meeting the people where they were. So I did go to the public, and I will continue to go to the public with the facts that they're asking for. Because you're, you're admitting that they don't have time to come to the meetings or listen to these debates or questions or whatever, and so there's a lot of holes. So they've been given nothing but the truth about what's happening, so they don't have to search for it. They don't have to, you're more than welcome to post your own. But you asked us for transparency, and then you asked to decide how that transparency occurred. It could only occur at a school board meeting, or can it go where the people are? They don't come to the meetings. They don't come to the meetings, they don't listen to the meetings afterwards. What's my favorite, we have like thirty-seven viewers on a school board meeting. So how else am I supposed to get the information out to them and be transparent? Social media is where the people are, that's how they get the information. The truth is where the truth is. They, I could ask them to FOIA all day long, or as their elected official, I could help guide them to understand where our decision points lie and how we made our decisions moving forward. Honestly, I find no joy in any of this. Not a single second have I enjoyed since this whole thing started. But you're talking about raising property taxes on families who can't afford it, and then cutting the very state, the very place where their kids spend the majority of their day, and not supporting the teachers that provide the care to those very kids in our community. We're talking about our economically disadvantaged, we're talking about our ESOL students. They deserve to have the best of the best. The school board, the, the Board of Supervisors, several past members have, I mean, they're just so happy with themselves for underfunding the school system for year after year after year. It is why we're in the place that we're in now. So Stafford County residents, every decision that's made, this isn't for us in today. This reflects five, ten years down the road from now for every kindergartner, first grader, and high school kid that we're, that we have a, an effect on their lives. So it does go both ways, and I will tell you, you want to talk about trust being shot? I mean, it comes from what was done the other night. Like, there is no way that you can underplay what happened the other night. And so whereas you may find it to be inappropriate, then I'll ask you to provide me with a different way that I can be more transparent to the people because I've held the community meetings, I get three people, maybe five people. How else can we support transparency and not get called out on the carpet for that if we don't go where the people are?
So I, I would like to, to make a comment if I may. Um, we all know that none of us can speak for the entire board on social media. I mean, Dr. Taylor could, uh, with the direction of the board, post something on social media. But we as individuals posting on social media, that does not reflect the board. That reflects the individual who is posting. Um, but I'd like to get back to sort of where we started this meeting, and I would really like to thank the Board of Supervisors for the eleven percent increase in our funding last year and for the, was it six or eight percent the year before that? Six percent the year before. And I look forward to working with you all to get as much funding as we can for next year because these people are relying on all of us. So I just really want to thank you all, thank you.
And I do want to say that the schools are a must-have. The schools are a must-have. They are critical to the importance to economic development and everything that happens here as far as our quality of life in Stafford County. Um, and I've always been forever grateful for everything that the school divi- division does. I would not want to be a teacher in the classroom, or a para, or, uh, many of the other jobs. While I would probably do a great job, I think being in a classroom right now would be very challenging. And I always thank every teacher that I see for the work that they do, regardless if they're in Stafford County or not. Um, so, does anybody else on our board have any comments?
Madam Chair, I have a comment.
Sure.
Can you all hear me okay? Okay, thank you. Um, I just wanted to make a, a few comments here. I, I feel like we're, we started to go roundabout there, so thank you, Dr. Chase, for bringing us back. But, um, I do want to touch on a couple of things that came up that I think are very important. So when we're talking about, uh, the tax right now, um, I just want to reiterate, this is very important since we're elaborating and giving more context. Well, the context is also that I brought up in our last meeting, and unfortunately, I was not able to be there, um, requesting about what our board was intending to do if we wrote this letter to try and force the school to, the school board to move elementary to nineteen. I asked one time, I asked two times, I asked three times, I asked four times, and then I repeated myself and I asked a fifth time, all while barely having a voice to speak. And I never got an answer to that question. So what I don't want to do right now is sit here and act like the schools are a priority and they're a must-have while we talk about tax rates and nobody answered that question. So I just want to make that very clear from, from where I'm standing. That was not appropriate to go from that situation into this one and now be talking about keeping tax rates down the way that we are when no responsibility has been taking, taken for the action that has been taken that's going to force more revenue out of the pockets of our taxpayers and into something where it did not need to grow at that rate that it is likely to grow at as far as the expenses. So I wanted to make that very clear. Um, secondly, I do want to reiterate that, yes, we all have our own social media. Everyone is accountable for the things that they post. We all have a right to do that. I think it is good to keep it not inflammatory, but obviously, we disagree with each other, so sometimes that's going to happen. And it is a tool that we use to get to people where they are because people don't come out to the meetings as much, or they don't come online and watch as much. So I don't want to start pushing back against that. Everyone can use it as they see fit. Our board has communications resources. The school board does not have that. So, um, in my perspective, even if I don't agree with them and I've seen things they've posted I don't agree, I try to engage them respectfully there or get on the phone, and I feel like that's been very productive even in the, um, disagreements that I've had with some of the school board members in the past. So I just want to encourage, um, all of us on both boards to keep those lines of communication open. If there are issues, that's the way that we ought to go about it as adults. And I do want to see, um, I do want to see us to make the schools a priority. Um, you know, my daughter who is in seventh grade now, um, when she was in first grade, okay, this long ago, she had five teachers in one year. These problems are far too longstanding, they are hurting our children. We are not making our kids a priority, and I'm going to continue to say a couple of other things and I'll wrap it up. One thing, being fiscally conservative does not mean you never raise taxes. It means that you're wise with your resources, and I don't think we've done that with recent actions that this board has taken, that's just my position. Two, if we really care about our children, we will put our money where our mouth is. We have not done that. We have not done that, and it is reflecting very poorly. And as was said, um, by Ms. Hall said, there are families who need their children to have, we all need our children to have a good education, but there are, there are children, there are families who are specifically disproportionately impacted by not having access to that good education because they can't just homeschool their kids or pull them out and send them to a private school if they want to. They don't have the resources, and we are hurting people, we are hurting children's futures. That's disgusting. We need to sit and think about that. We are hurting children's futures. And I'm going to get off my soapbox, thank you all for listening.
All right, thank you Supervisor Gary. Um, Dr. Taylor, if you could just address one thing. I thought that the school division had a very robust public information, um, system. So could you please help me there?
Not sure that robust is the word I'd use to describe it. We have, uh, uh, three very hardworking people, uh, that, that make up our, our communications team and, and a couple of clerical assistants. Um, that, that's what we've got.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, sure, Supervisor Diggs, and then we're going to wrap it up, starting with Dr. Young, if you have any, uh, final comments.
So first, I want to thank you, Dr. Taylor, for an awesome presentation. There's a couple of things that I've heard tonight as I've listened to everyone speak, and I think sometimes those that have kids may look at it from a personal standpoint, but we have to look at it from the system as a whole. And, um, I, I just want to go on record saying I support the schools. Um, I support the support staff. Um, I realize what you all do, and sometimes it's often overlooked, um, but you are the glue that holds the school community together. And so, um, when we start talking about the tax rate and, and having to make a decision on that, um, prior to being in this position, I used to think, and I remember hearing actually in one of the meetings, um, one of the constituents saying, we kick the can down the road. We keep kicking the can down the road. And so all of the years that we lowered taxes or we equalized, um, the, the tax rate, I, I believe it's coming due now. It's coming due now. And so, um, those years where constituents celebrated, where we lowered the taxes, um, th- it wasn't no forward thinking or vision as to what was going to happen down the road. And so now we're in a space and a place where we're going to have to, to, to bear the brunt of that. The other thing that I was hearing, um, when we're talking about the federal and the state funding um, as it relates to schools, where I sit and what I'm thinking about is what is our responsibility as staffer for our kids? Um, I don't want to rely on what the state's doing or what the federal government is going to supply us with. What is our stake in this? What is our focus? How are we going to be remembered as we, again, what we do today is going to be for the future, right? It's going to be for the boards that come after us, and so we have to think in that terms or, or in that way. And so I say all of this, or say all of that to say this, I support the schools, we all support the schools. Um, the other thing that we're contending with is I have constituents who have almost lost their home, homes as a result of the tax raises that we've done. And so that's very troubling for me as well, um, because how do we make that all balance out? Um, I don't want to throw anyone away, right? So every student is important to me, every staff member is important, but those constituents that are living paycheck to paycheck, that are barely making it, that are trying to hold on to their family's property, um, they're important as well. So tough decisions, that's why we ran for this office, we're sitting in these seats. Um, so we, we, we have to make those tough decisions. Uh, but leaving here today or tonight, I, I want us all to really, um, work together because if all fourteen of us can get over our egos and these titles and we really start focusing on the issues, we could get a lot done. And so when we go out in the community, whether it's right, wrong, or indifferent, um, and we start stirring our, our friends up in the community, um, i- it's not going to help us accomplish this goal. So whatever the tax rate is, if we work together and we say, this is what it is, this is the best we can do for this year, I think our constituents could jump on board with that, uh, versus the back and forth. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Diggs. Um, so we have this room from four to six, and then I just want to remind, um, our board, we have to go into closed session after this. I don't know if you were aware that we're going into closed session. Um, so if, um, I just thought, I don't know about your, on your side, Ms. Signetman, but if we wanted to start with Dr. Young, and if you had any just follow-up comments, we would go down the row. Quick management summary, if you will.
Yes, I, I will do that. Um, I just don't want anyone to leave this room thinking that, the Board of Supervisors do not believe that the school system is not important. And before any of you joined or even moved into Stafford County, I was here fighting for the schools. Then be part of committees, go on field trips and, and, and do all the things that we as parents do. And as Supervisor Diggs just mentioned, I am not tunnel vision about my child. It's about all children, every single one. And I always spoke for those that did not have a voice. There's some of us have voices that we use very well. And don't think that, I don't read all the emails that I get or social media that is sent to me. Some of it is very painful. I go back a couple of years to thank Ms. Guy. For standing up for me. And Ms. Chase. So today, I'm one of those underserved. I'm one of those without a job. I'm one of those on food stamps. I'm one of those on a set income. But I will still be thinking about every single child and every single taxpayer that may or may not be in my position. So let's not talk about our individual selves collectively. Let's make it work. And finally, I want to thank Mr. Bosberg from the bottom of my heart for those lasagnas and inviting me over to your house and be part of your family sometimes. Thank you.
And those cheesecakes. Okay.
Dr. Taylor?
I was, I was about to say, um, I was unaware of the cheesecake expectation on the school side.
Cheesecake too.
Seems very carb-forward on the county side.
Um, just really quick, uh, since I just spoke. Listen, I sat here the whole meeting and said, no, you be quiet. All right, um, so I'll just end with this. Um, I believe in the impossible, all right? Um, I have a story of, my life story is, you know, doing the impossible. And so head in the cloud, clouds, glass half-full. Um, if we are serious about this, we can get it done. And I know some people think I'm crazy for saying stuff like this, but, um, let's, let's, uh, work together as a team, all fourteen of us, again, right, to accomplish the mission. So believe in the impossible. Was that short enough?
Yep. Thank you Supervisor Diggs. Supervisor Engle.
I will be, you know, I'm very short. Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Chris, for what y'all did. Thank you, presentation. Thank you, school board members. We can do this, we work together. I think we need to, uh, extend the olive branch. Support staff, I hear you. I'll do what I can to help you guys because I know that you come every meeting and I, and I'm sure you live from paycheck to paycheck, and my assessment went up ninety thousand dollars, so I know what I'm looking at. So hopefully, we can all get our heads together and we can get this to where we need to be. And again, thank you, and, um, that's what I have to say.
Okay. Supervisor Vanuch.
Um, he turned me off. Um, what I wanted to say earlier, I think we need to just put everything to, to the side, and we need to start fresh, and we all need to just take this budget year and really work together and go arm-in-arm and see what we can come up with. And when we come to you guys with some hard information, just like we have hard choices too, I think we need to just put personalities aside, individual priorities aside, and we need to work together. Thank you.
Supervisor Allen?
Uh, I, I'll, I'll try to be short. Um, you know, since I've been on the board, Supervisor Vanuch probably can vouch for that. Um, I've always wanted to raise taxes. Um, and, you know, as with the main purpose being to fund schools, and this is without my kid being in the school system at the time. Um, and, and she's correct, over the last three years, we're looking at a significant, um, tax increase on people, and I just want to share a few personal stories for you guys to understand that. I think this is probably the first year where I probably took a big swallow and said, wow, um, you know, I don't know what I'm going to do this year, and the county minister that can probably testify to that. Um, because usually I'm pretty, already made up my mind, know where I'm at, kind of figure out what the priorities are and what I'm willing to negotiate. And, uh, this is probably the first year because, similar to teachers, you know, nurses face this, the same exact scenario in terms of pay, um, and compensation in this region. Um, as a personal story, I didn't get a pay raise. My pay raise over the last two years was maybe three percent. Um, and Stafford Hospital, Marion Washington are facing the exact same issues. Um, I'm getting ready to leave to go to Prince William. Um, and I hate to have, to admit that, but, uh, you know, I, and, no, no, no. Um, and it's because it's a significant pay difference that, you know, that's affordable. And if I'm willing to raise taxes, those are the sacrifices I'm going to have to make is I'm going to have to go get a job somewhere else that's where I cannot live, play, and work at home. I'm going to have to commute. Um, and I'm doing that because I'm willing to bank on our children's education. Um, you know, it is demoralizing to know that you're doing multiple jobs, which is why I asked the questions about teachers and, and all that because I know as a nurse, we're being asked now to do more and more and not getting our pay raises um, to reflect that. And I know in the school system is the exact same thing. Um, and so I, I hear you. Uh, the support staff, you know... Uh, the support staff, you know, it's funny cuz I don't think anyone mentioned that, that one of the competing, which is weird, one of the competing, uh, industries for you guys is your local Walmart or Target. Um, my mom worked for the school nutrition service and she quit before she moved, um, out of the country because she was like, I'm going, I'm gonna go work at Walmart cuz they're gonna pay me more. So I completely understand, I mean Supervisor Baumke knew that, I told her that nutrition services weren't being competitive with what the local Walmart, Target, um, or Giant, or Wise, or Shoppers are willing to pay people. So I, I, I completely believe you, um, because I saw her paycheck. And I used to tell her, if you did not have us, how could you even afford to live in Stafford? Um, and so, definitely that is one of the things that, for me, priority-wise, that I've wanted to change. And so, I definitely will be fighting to, to try to rectify that. I don't know how we get there, um, but it is, it is important to me. Um, and then lastly, I was just gonna give a story about, you know, my kid. Um, when Dr. Taylor had on the slide, the cause of, of, of technology to replace, um, was one point three. I think I called him maybe a couple of weeks ago, maybe in January. Um, my kid started in August and by January, she was up to her fourth Chromebook being replaced. Um, and I don't like to tell the school personnel who I am because every child needed to be treated equally. So I didn't say anything, but I got frosted, no, but I got frustrated because every time her Chromebook became defective, she fell behind in her classwork. And as I said before, she does have attention deficit issues. So try imagine playing catch-up with someone who has attention deficit issues and being behind in her classwork, because at one point, she went a week without having a Chromebook. Uh, God knows how many assignments we, I think that one was the worst, cuz I think it took us a month to finally get her back on track. Um, and she's high-functioning, so she's a straight A student, maybe a B here and there, but for the most part, she's an honor student. And I'm like, if this is what she's experiencing, what do the other thirty thousand students in Stafford County are dealing with who don't have the resources or the aptitude or, or the connections to get it done? So I, I hear you, I totally understand your challenges, um, I feel it personally. So as my colleagues have said, this is probably a very difficult budget year because as Supervisor Baumke laid out, we're starting at eighty-four without even meeting our needs. And for us to get where we're at, there's gonna be a lot of difficult decisions that have to be made. And I don't want the community to think as, as, I think that's what some of my colleagues are saying, is the thing that we are purposely trying to hurt the schools or any facet of our government and underfund anyone, um, because that's not the reality. Um, a lot of people are on fixed incomes, um, who've been here forever, and they have no control about their assessments. And so we have to balance protecting the most vulnerable that have been in Stafford County, um, on both sides, not just the elderly, but also the students. And so, I think as we go through this, this difficult budget cycle over the next, uh, was it four weeks? You know, we just have to be cognizant of being respectful, uh, of the job and the difficulties and the challenges that both boards face. And I think if we can set the tone as the governing bodies of Stafford County, then as we try to navigate the past indecisions or lack of decisions from our predecessors, that helps the community to digest some of this information. And it mitigates the angst and the anger that they feel because the messaging and the professionalism is there. And they're understanding that these are hard choices that both boards are making. This is not, you know, a gotcha or something that any board is doing to harm each other. So I'll leave it at that.
Well, I think it's all been said by my, um, colleagues. I think they've articulated how we all feel. And I just want you to know, the reason I brought up the eighty-four cents and just to share with you how we build a budget, how we, how we make those decisions. And it wasn't to scare anybody, I, I didn't mean it to offend anyone, that's for sure. It's just, those are the tough decisions that we all have to make. And at the end of the day, the seven of us are responsible for setting that final tax rate. And, um, I do, would just like to end by saying, we do have another meeting, March seventh at four o'clock right here. Just reminding everyone. Um, I know that, uh, Missy and Cheryl, our wonderful clerks, have had exchanged emails regarding the three-on-three. Um, I personally would rather focus on the bu- budget issues and start our three-on-three when the, uh, budgets are approved, if that is okay with everybody. Um, just cuz we have so little time between now and then.
Madam Chair, may I make a closing remark before we finish?
Yes, um, and so I think that's it. Supervisor Gary?
Thank you very much. Um, I, I wanna kinda echo what Supervisor Diggs was saying and, and really believing the impossible. And I, I've seen that in my life many times. And I do believe that we can find a path forward, we just need a glide path. We have some wonderful things on the horizon with economic development and the data centers. We have some opportunities here and we're on the cusp of something really great in being able to actually balance, I believe, the way that we need to. And so, yes, I do wanna navigate this, you know, professionally, but we, we really, if that's what we're gonna do, all of us, we have to be honest. We have to be honest about our intentions, we have to be honest with each other, we have to be honest with our constituents. And that is the most important thing. None of us can hold the others accountable as, you know, ideally we should be able to. We are all accountable to ourselves. We are accountable to the people that we represent. And so, I just want to make that appeal that we would at least all just be honest. You know, if we disagree about things, that's one thing, but be honest about intentions and, and be respectful and speak to one another, pick up the phone. It, it's so much better when we work together that way. It's not gonna be perfect, but we do owe that at least to our constituents. And it has been hard, and that's not lost on me. And, and I'll close on that, you know, I, um, you know, Peter and I laugh all the time saying, I lose money doing this job, but we do. You know, after all is said and done, it, it is expensive to just do this job and not be doing something else where I could provide better. But I love what I do, um, I love people, and I'm very grateful to be able to be of service in the way that I am. And I want to reiterate to everyone, to the public and to the school board and to, and everyone at the schools, and thank you for this presentation and, and this conversation again. We're working very hard to try and find all of the solutions we possibly can. Um, you know, Chairwoman Baumke and I were down in Richmond, we're going and speaking with our legislators. I've worked with, um, Dr. Young and Supervisor Vanuch on the Legislative Committee, pushing for the things that we need to get funding from the state. And we've all been at the helm of this, trying to find other solutions that isn't raising taxes. So as we navigate this, I just wanna remind everyone of that. Um, I don't think anyone on this board just wants to hike up people's taxes and make it impossible to live here. It is very, very hard already. So, um, hopefully we can get through this peacefully and, uh, and honestly, because I think that's the most important thing. Thank you.
Thank you. And at this point, I'll turn it over to School Board Member Sigman.
We do wanna be cognizant of your time. Um, I, I will like to ask you to give some closing remarks. Dr. Chase, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Um, I just wanna thank, uh, Dr. Taylor and, uh, Mr. Fulmer for the presentation. And, um, to thank the Board of Supervisors, my very first, uh, budget work session like this, um, I remember being attacked by a supervisor who's no longer on the board. And so I just wanna thank you all for, for, you know, some congenial conversation. Thank you.
I would also like to echo, thank you Dr. Taylor and Mr. Fulmer, Fulmer for putting together our presentation and our Healy-sized documents. That's helpful for our aging eyes. I've been a citizen of Stafford County for fifty years. And, uh, as a student, as a teacher and a parent, of course, my mom was a teacher, my son was a teacher. Um, you know, he is fortunate to live in a state where the starting teacher salary is eighty-seven thousand five hundred. And, um, you know, he, uh, and, but, and at the same time, their schools are not well-managed financially, and because of that, they're, um, keeping teachers but closing schools. So I'm grateful that we have a process in place in Stafford County that while we are growing students, that we find ways. And every year, whatever we get from the state in a formulaic response, from the federal in a formulaic response, and from the county, from whatever they find, um, is theirs to give, that we as the schools make it happen anyway. Um, it's not, you know, we, there's consequences for us, but we make it happen. And we do appreciate the option this year to having an extra meeting with you all, actually two. Um, so I really appreciate you guys, um, making the time for us to come and talk. I know several, almost all of you I've spoken with, one-on-one, when I've, uh, emailed, called, or texted, I've given, been given a favorable response and able to have conversation, cuz I also have questions. Um, so I appreciate the opportunities for the dialogues. Thank you.
Um, so I'll just say, um, you know, again, thank you to Dr. Taylor and, and Chris. I, the amount of time and effort and energy you put into this, the detail that are in the spreadsheet, the line items, the multiple times I've had to recycle the things that you've given us, um, as a good environmental person. Um, you know, this is an incredibly, um, uh, passionate place to be when you're dealing with the school system and the kids and stuff, and it gets very overwhelming every day to get the daily reports and updates for what's happening in our school systems, and then to see the sheriff's reports and, and how our kids are not just behaving, but hurting each other every day, one way or the other. And not just each other, but themselves from one way or another. It's, as a mom, it's devastating to see that the overcrowding in our schools, the continued loss of our teachers to Prince William County because of funding issue. It is the most helpless feeling you can ever have in your whole life. It keeps me up at night wondering how or when we're gonna get that call that we've actually lost a student to some of the stuff going on in our schools. So whereas I am cognizant of all this stuff, you'll forgive my passionate, um, outreach to the public because I don't find, I can't find a way to be, um, I don't wanna say rational, but that's kinda the word in my head right now, um, when it comes down to this stuff. Because we've reached crisis point, we are at critical mass in our schools. We are at a point where we are very dangerously on the side of something happening right now if we don't act quickly and appropriately. So I get all the funding issues, all the tax issues, Stafford County is grossly lacking in business revenue, we understand all that. But I think everyone needs to approach this understanding that there are twelve hundred homes coming to Stafford County. And not a single place to put these kids, other than the infrastructure that we currently have. That is unsustainable, it is untenable, and it is absolutely vital that we begin to put buildings up in this, in this county.
Okay. Check, check your, check your social media, you know, about an hour, you can respond. I, I can say that because I'm probably the only one here that does not, um, go into, oh, it's Dr. Chase. Well, I don't know if it's the old school or, or what, but, um,
No, she's just smart.
You know, the, the social, but, 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 put that aside. I wanna say that I am encouraged by this meeting. I feel like we have listened to each other. And I think that's really important, because a lot of times, we talk to each other. And we don't, we wanna listen to ourselves rather than, you know, what someone else is hearing. And, and I, I feel that, that you have listened to us, I, and I, and I appreciate, um, Ms. Baumke, you're, you're, you're giving us, you know, a, a snapshot of, of the, the process and the, you know, the, the issues you have to deal with. Because I've always felt that you are in a much more difficult position than we are. We're the advocates for the school system, so we're going to come and say what we need, and we're gonna ask for that, and our job is to advocate. But you have to consider the entire county, the needs of the entire county, and somehow, um, you know, come up with, with, with an answer, a balance. And, and that balance may differ from year to year. I, I, I think it's, it's been a very healthy dialogue. And even the, um, the, the more, um, um, passionate part of the discussion, I think that's important because it shows, you know, what's, you know, what's important to us and, and, and what makes, you know, what makes a difference. So thank you for listening. Um, I do think you have the interest at heart. Um, I just have one request, and, and that not for today, but, but I would like you to relook at the letter that, um, went from the super, from your administrator to our superintendent with, you know, certain directions. And that doesn't seem to be in the spirit of our dialogue today. So if, if that's something that you intend, uh, to keep on the record, I mean, it was, I'm, he sent it at your direction, but, you know, then, then so be it. But it, but if you all have a change of heart, um, you know, I, I'd suggest that you address that, um, you know, at some point, preferably before our meeting next Tuesday. But, you know, right now, we've, we've, we've got a very, um, collegial environment here. We've had good, candid discussion, and I think we're gonna leave here, you know, with some optimism that we're gonna be looking forward to work together. But that particular directive, and, and I don't fault Mr. Bosberg at all, it's clear he was the messenger. Um, that doesn't go along with, you know, with, I think, the, the, the road we're trying to follow here. So we're all, um, elected officials, we all have constituents we're accountable to. And, you know, we, our job is very different. Um, but by working together, we can enhance, you know, what we're able to do for the, for the county. Thank you.
Um, I too, I'm starting my thirtieth, yeah. I know, I didn't skip her, she's the closer, we got a system. I do wanna thank you guys for doing this, for, especially for monitoring everything in Richmond that allowed us to pivot. Um, even right down to the wire, coming in here, uh, to adjust our ask because that allows us, um, to really just be nimble in everything that we do. And, uh, um, like Dr. Young, I am starting my thirtieth year here in Stafford. And, you know, every person in this room has chosen Stafford. They choose Stafford every single day. Every day, we're not counting down to the end of our lease or putting a for-sale sign in our yard. We wake up choosing to be part of this community. And some of us, you know, were raised here, and some of us were brought here by jobs. And some of us moved here because we came here on weekends, that's how I ended up here. Um, and I think that that is kind of what I'm getting out of this conversation, is that we are choosing Stafford County. And that every time anybody who lives here wakes up every day and continues to put our community first, that we will make progress. Um, sorry, it's Tuesday, so I'm getting my Tuesday call from the elementary school. Um, I also, she wasn't here during our, uh, welcome, but our, one of our student reps is here, this is Jenny Adotica, and she goes to Mountain View High School. Uh, she is an invaluable asset to our board, so welcome and thank you for being here. I don't wanna put you on the spot, but, and have you, uh, put you on the spot for comments, but I did wanna recognize, uh, you and introduce you to the Board of Supervisors. Oh, great. I would love that.
Alright, guys, alright. Um, on behalf of my student rep, Jolene Doku, who unfortunately couldn't be here, um, as a result of unforeseen circumstances, and the students of Stafford County, I would like to say huge thank you for all the work you guys put into making our community a better and our education system a better place. Um, in addition to saying that, um, I myself feel that it is such a great honor to be able to better understand all the components that go into the, the decision-making processes. Uh, it is, but is it cuz I'm a little far? I'm sorry. Um, but yeah, and, um, all, in conclusion, I just like to say a huge thank you. Um, this is a lot, and as a student, at times I would, I didn't understand all of the components that went into all these decision-making processes. But as a result of these meetings, I am better understanding all those things. So thank you so very much, and I look forward to working with you guys. Sorry.
Is this on? Okay. Sometimes I too do not understand all the components, so do not feel alone in that. Um, I do love what I've heard from the Board of Supervisors. I truly hope that it's genuine and that we can get along, and even if we don't like the individual, we respect the seat. Um, that's a huge thing for me, that's how I, I raised my kids. I'll just tell you, um, my first year, I, I went to the Board of Supervisors meeting to advocate for our funding, and I misspoke and I was completely wrong. I didn't know I was wrong until I was told I was wrong. Actually Supervisor Allen texted me and said, girl, you wrong. And I went back and read the minutes again and understood that I misread the minutes. Um, I do this because I love the people, right? I moved to Stafford to get away from my husband's ex-wife, and I found a beautiful, it's the truth, I'm just, I'm just being truthful. And I found my soft place to fall. I found people that made me say, my children will be raised here, and I'm gonna fight for these kids. I say that to say, I went to Supervisor Vanuch, and I apologize. I say that to say, I went to Supervisor Vernich and I apologized. And I asked, do you want me to come back to the meeting and apologize because I misspoke publicly? And you guys deserve an apology publicly. She told me no. She didn't want to see me no more. You kind of, like, your spirit said that. Your spirit did say that. You said, no, this is fine, but your spirit said, don't come back. But that's okay. It's okay. So my point is, I agree. Let's put away our egos. Let's respect the seat because our children are watching. And the decisions that we make today are going to have consequences for the next 10, 15, maybe even 20 years. But I will, I will leave you guys with, with one thing because I respect the competing interests that you guys have to deal with and people who are almost losing their homes. But I will say, I've got five kids that have either gone through the school system or are in the school system. My kids genuinely like have a lot of friends. I have had to call the sheriff's office or do something three times because a student has come to myself or my child and telling us, I'm not like a mandated reporter, but if I was a teacher, you'd call me a mandated reporter. And I've had to do that. And thank God, things happen, right? Can't say, but things have happened. The schools, that happened because of the schools, right? That was because they knew me because I'm in the schools. The schools are these children's soft place to fall. If it wasn't for the relationship that they have with me, being a parent volunteer or one of the educators, and we talked and figured out, oh my goodness, this is what's going on, what would happen to those students? I don't know. They would have fallen through the cracks. So I just put that out there that we just focus on the fact that these students need us. I know they need homes too, but kids are transient. There's always a school. That, that's that one thing that our, our country has that other places don't have, is that we've got this public school system that props up the entire country. And I think we're getting away from that. It's like we recognized that for two weeks of COVID when the schools shut down. But also, I was a Realtor and your local school system drives your local economy usually, you know, with real estate. If your real estate market crashes, your entire community crashes. But the real estate market is tied to the schools, right? My mother's old, but she's looking for another home, right? She's like, oh, she's got no kids in schools. But the first thing she asks a Realtor is how the schools. It matters. And I understand that everything else that you guys do matter as well. So I'll just be praying that you guys make the best decision. And thank you for the opportunity to work with you guys.
Okay, thank you so much. And we are going to take a five-minute recess and then we will go into closed session. Thank you. Okay, we have, we are going to go into closed session right now. It is Tuesday, February 27th, 2024. Supervisor Allen.
Our resolution to accept the resignation.
No, 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 no.
That's the one I got.
This, this. We're going into closed session.
That's the one I got. It's out of me.
Our resolution to authorize closed meeting, whereas the board desires to hold a closed meeting for discussion of the performance and related employment matters of an employee of the board, and whereas pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711, such discussion may occur in closed meeting. Now therefore be resolved by the Stafford County Board of Supervisors on this 27th day of February 2024, that it be and hereby does authorize discussions of the above matters of closed meeting.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, everyone, please say aye with a voice vote. Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Gary, how do you vote? Okay, wonderful. We are now in closed session. Thank you. Yes, woo, sorry. We are now going to certify our closed session. Supervisor Allen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our resolution to certify the actions of the Stafford County Board of Supervisors in a closed meeting on February 27th, 2024, whereas the board has on this 27th day of February 2024, adjourned into a closed meeting in accordance with the formal vote of the board and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas the Virginia Freedom of Information Act provides for certification that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with the law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Stafford County Board of Supervisors does hereby certify on this 27th day of February 2024, that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered by the board.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of certifying closed session, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Supervisor Gary, you said aye, correct? Okay, I'm just stating it for the record. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries, okay. Supervisor Allen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to make a motion for Resolution R 24-116. A resolution to accept the resignation of the county administrator, whereas the board entered into an employment agreement with Randall E. Vosberg on Ju- Okay, now therefore be resolved by the Stafford Board of Supervisors on the 27th day of February 2024, that the board be and hereby does accept the resignation of the Stafford County Administrator Randall Vosberg, and be it further resolved that the board, in agreement with Mr. Vosberg, accept his resignation effective April 5th, 2024.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye? Supervisor Gary said aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Supervisor Young, did you say? Did you say yea? Okay.
You still, you still have one, two, three, four, five, six.
Okay, that motion passes six to one with one saying nay. Okay, so we have now accepted Randy's resignation. And his last day will be April 5th, and the meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.